Mr. Francis, Mr. Fraser. Ms. Jordan is accused this evening. Mr. Liam, Mr. Moss.
Here.
Ms. Seymour, Mr. Simon.
Here.
This is, I'm losing track, fourth or fifth of a series of joint meetings that we've had this year with various constituencies in Southfield. And we will be meeting at Providence Hospital in September, so we'll add that to the list of meetings that we've had. I want to welcome our guests from Mark's Technological University. And I would ask that you introduce yourself. I think everybody knows you, but I don't really believe so for all of us. Dr. Michael?
Well, I'm Brenda Mordell. Started as president of the city's project of life, so I just moved on here. Before this, some of you may know, I was in the area in Oakland County. I was thirty-six years at Oakland University, eleven years as the provost before I'm here. And I'm very delighted to be with you in Southfield and being an executive.
Hi, I'm Mark Brooke. I'm executive director for Economic Development and Government Relations at Lawrence Tech. Thank you for having us.
Hi, Kevin Finn, Dean of students at Lawrence Tech. Thank you as well.
And I'm Bruce Sennett. I'm director of marketing and public affairs at Lawrence Tech. Thank you for having us.
Hi, I'm Linda Height. I'm the vice president for finance administration at Lawrence Tech. I know most of you, I think.
Dr. Cassie, council.
Herb Blumberg, legislature officer.
Joan Seymour, council. Two more deputy senators.
Nancy Bayne, Southfield City Clerk, proud parent of an LT graduate, and Mary, what else you graduate?
Jim Shurek, city administrator. A pleasure to head your company here. We're all interested in economic development in the city, so that's why we're here together today.
Ken Seiber.
Mayor Fraser, city councilor.
Jeremy Maugh, office of city council.
Terry Truss. And Marty Williams.
Marty Williams here on behalf of Mayor Lawrence, if you have to join the meeting.
So at this point, we'll greet at our meeting and welcome you to have some dinner room. You can continue to enjoy your dinner, and there's some dessert on the side table. But in the interest of time, I'd like to begin. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Michael, who has some introductions and things he'd like to share about the field. So, Dr. Michael, the floor is yours.
Okay. Then we'll put that aside for that slide. We have the Cassie, and we're going to do a video of the great overall thing that presented by Brenda Lawrence. Members of the council, member of the city center committee, economic development committee, and citizen of Southfield. I come here with a lot of pride to let you know how much I admire the city of Southfield for what it stands and what it contributes to the region and local economy, and how proud I am to associate with the city, which is our home for our institution. So I'll have a chance to share with you some of the things that I'm proud of at Lawrence Tech, and some I know and I'd like to know from you, how these two institutions, the city of Southfield and Lawrence Technological University, could join hands to move it to the next level as a community. I personally believe that, as I have driven through on Highway 10, on large freeway, years and years going to the airport, always wonder looking at these towers and other buildings and reading in the papers, that Southfield is the business center of city of Detroit, or the business district of city of Detroit. And Lawrence Tech historically has been associated with development of middle class in America. If you think about the legacy and history, that we started as Lawrence Institute of Technology on Henry Ford Model C plant. So when you have a beginning on Henry Ford plant, and you are associated with the producing engineers and workers who changed America, produced and manufactured things that changed America, developed the middle class, and then participated in during World War II, where automobile companies or corporations were developing tanks and pipelines and so forth. I think this is a legacy I'm very proud of to associate with, and it happened in the city of Southfield that we now call our home. So I'd like to see and plead to you that although we have many, many levels of interaction between the city and the university, that there's much more to be done. Because no great city in America is great in the absence of a great university. And no great university has become great in the absence of the community support and city and municipality. So this is a natural marriage. We just want to ceremonies it and make it more formal at some point. For those of us that do not know much about Lawrence Tech, I'll, with your permission, talk a little bit about it. And I do want to let you know how grateful I am, with my colleagues, to be with you and talk about our mutual interests and possibilities that we can do together to raise the profile of our institution and the city together. I had just finished one year at Lawrence Tech, and during that, a lot of good things have happened that make me even prouder than I came in. For example, Lawrence Tech graduates now are among the top seven percent of return of investment in the entire country. That means the Lawrence Tech graduates now earn more money when they graduate, and they are at a higher level of economic ladder. So even though we are a private institution, it costs more to come to Lawrence Tech. We don't get any state subsidy. We do not get any municipal dollars, as community colleges and schools do. So we have unwillingly, but by necessity, charged tuition. That could be a concern of some parents. But I always plead that, please, when you buy a stock and you invest in your retirement account, you do not look at the price of a single share. You look at how much money you're going to return. Some shares cost $1, others cost $100 or more. It is the return on investment. We're very proud that Lawrence Tech has the highest return of investment in southeast Michigan, any university, and seven percent times nationally. So that's a great record. So we have a great institution amongst us. The online program, men and women, America now, they're working, they are homemakers, some of them cannot spend all day at the university. So online education has an alternate method of delivering education. The undergraduate online program at Lawrence Tech was rated number six in the country. That's quite a record. Anything to be number six in this great country. But it didn't stop there. We were rated the best, or number one, in the whole country in online, in student engagement as to what is the level of participation of students in these programs, how well they learn, and what type of tools they use in their education. And we were number one in the country. Then we have alumni that we are so proud of. Any institution is really measured by the graduates it produces. What are they doing, who they are, et cetera. We just gave an honorary degree to our former student, Steve Bomer, the Microsoft CEO. And he talked with a lot of pride about his time at Lawrence Tech when he was here. His mother used to drive him for two years, and that led him to going to Harvard, where he met Bill Gates. While in China, I noticed there was a building that was coming up, and it was labeled the tallest building in Shanghai, China, and second tallest building in the world. I did not know at that time. My wife and I took a picture by his side. And two years later, I come to Lawrence Tech, only to learn that that building is designed by our graduates, Dan Whining. And I didn't waste any time to go see him in San Francisco at his company. Then we had many distinguished visitors, at least in the recent past, Gary Peters, who might be our senator, at least he's going to fight for it. Congressman Gary Peters was our commencement speaker. So we have many, many ideas to push the university to the next level, in that we have focus on student retention, student graduation, and enrollment. Right now, we are about forty-five hundred students. We wish to go up to six thousand. The reason is, with more students on campus, you will have a more vibrant community. Many of them will live here, they'll shop here, they'll work here. Some of them, their families will come and stay in the hotel and spend money in the city, so you have a tax revenue. And also, it will be a more vibrant student life on campus. We are also looking at student housing, and we want to appreciate, all my colleagues are grateful for the help we have received from the city in that regard. And our board of trustees is now giving positive indications, and there'll be some discussion in the next board trustee meeting. Then I have launched a global village project, which is to create a global knowledge of our graduates, no matter where they work. Even if somebody has a building in Southfield, and he or she is the CEO, chances are, his or her employees are coming from different ethnic backgrounds, in different countries. They're either immigrants or citizens of this country. And for some CEO to be most effective, you have to be able to communicate with these men and women from different backgrounds. So as Tom Friedman mentioned in his famous book, The World is Flat, where a kid in New York has same opportunity today as one in Bangladesh, the poorest of nations. Because if you had a computer with you, you have access to all the information you need, whether you're in a poor country or in Manhattan. So global issues are very important for our students to be successful, not only Southfield or Michigan, but wherever they go. So we are launching a global village concept on our campus, where we are inviting the parents and families of our students to learn peace, terrorism, international finances, all issues that confront globally will be taught in that short program. And that'll start in this August. We are also excited about future opportunities for our students to have state-of-the-art facilities. One of that is the Taubman Engineering Complex. This will be a complex for life sciences, engineering, and architecture. Mr. Taubman has, who is a former student of Lawrence Tech, by the way, actually even taught classes at Lawrence Tech, and he has given a challenge of $11 million. He's already given $1 billion cash, $10 million will follow after a $20 million challenge. To have this $55 million building, which would possibly break ground in the near future, next year or so, that'll give our students state-of-the-art, without any silos, a building in which engineering, architects, and life sciences students work together. Because the problems of the future are not going to be boxed into a particular discipline. For example, our students are so good in concrete design, they can design a beautiful car, and some have received some awards. But good-looking cars are not necessarily good-looking engineering cars. So we designed a program called Architectural Engineering. So not only they are able to design buildings and structures and automobiles, but they are engineering-wise very fit and desirable. This program is one of the most unique in the country. We also launching new programs such as robotic engineering. This is the first program of its kind in the state of Michigan, and the second program in the nation. I think our members in the audience will know that it is not very distant that mostly all our functions will be operated either in completely or in part by robots. Now you have robot prostate surgery in Henry Ford, a very famous worldwide. There are folks who are doing hard operations by robots, because there's a precision, and there's no human error. So a lot of functions are now being performed by robots. And we will be able to academically prepare these students with training, which is our motto, which is theory and practice. Lawrence Tech distinguishes itself in that our students not only learn in a classroom, but they actually practice what they learn, and that is in our same theory and practice. And we have other programs that are biomedical engineering, for example. In fact, if you go to a hospital, any serious operation or activity in a hospital is not exempt from robotics or engineering. The instruments are made by engineers. The computers that look at charts and help the surgeon, they're all engineer-made. So biomedical engineering is a very strong component of Lawrence Technological University education, and that is growing very rapidly as well. So these are a number of new programs that are rapidly getting a lot of attention and will help us in the community. So we want to build a strong town-gone relationship with city of Southfield. I think in many ways, we have that relation, but it'll be helpful to formalize it in a way, and let the board know that city of Southfield and Lawrence Tech have a relationship which is mutually beneficial, and it helps our citizenry and students, the future students of Lawrence Tech, and men and women who live here and pay taxes, make it a home. I want to thank the Southfield City Center Committee for, I think you have your magazine, there's a spread on the planning of city centers. We were very excited and grateful for that collaboration. Economic Development Committee has done wonders working with our university. I think now the carbon fiber, which is Dean Grace's great gift to a family, where carbon fiber is stronger than steel but lighter. So a lot of bridges are using that option to build bridges which states badly. In fact, President Obama and the governor have indicated that our roads and bridges are in desperate need of repair and unwavering. And we have a role, now Dean Grace is being looked at by four, five, maybe six countries. They want his expertise to build bridges by carbon fiber. And there are two bridges actually being built right now in Eight Mile by Lawrence Tech as model or pilot projects. And you will see more of that, and that is Economic Development Committee and their One of the great collaborative events that we have launched, in which the city has promised to be involved, is the pediatric obesity. I think we all know that last week, there was an international news that Mexico was named as the fattest country in the world, America was number two. We have more obese people in this country, and more obese children. So pediatric obesity is a big issue for this country. So we wanted to have the city, one with Lawrence Tech, and other community members, to address pediatric obesity. So we had a chance to sit with Sterling Spardon, CEO of Keller Foundation, who came to Lawrence Tech. And I spoke with him and presented to him the idea that we will be the first community-based program in the nation, where city of Southfield, Lawrence Tech, Providence Hospital, and our school system, they will all work together to address pediatric obesity. He was so happily stunned by this approach, because mostly it is either the hospital or the school or a nutrition program, but not, the community doesn't come together from many different aspects to address a single problem. So that, I think you have in your folder perhaps a white paper that we produced by our faculty, and we are waiting for their call to us to write a full proposal. And we hope that with the city's support and involvement, and we just met the team at Providence Hospital, they have all types of projects, clinical, midwif, men and women who soon after the birth start nutritional program for the child, so that they can prevent obesity. That would be a great program for the city to have. I have also tried to reach the First Lady, Michelle Obama, who has campaigned this at a national level, pediatric obesity. What quality of students come to Lawrence Tech? Well, last year, class had the highest ACT scores and the highest GPA, almost eight grade students with high ACT scores. So we are drawing up very capable, upper-level students to come to Lawrence Tech. And enrollment is strong for 2013, 2014. We might have all-time high first-year class next year, or this fall, as we have last year. And we are also going to be aggressively pursuing television and other means of advertisement about Lawrence Tech. At some point, I would like to see that we work together, that we co-produce city of Southfield and Lawrence Tech issues for promoting the city and promoting our collaboration. I think it's possible. It will also help us to raise the cost. Our College of Management, Quikly, is now pursuing ASCV accreditation, which is the most desired accreditation for business schools. We already have two professional society accreditation for our current program. Just last week, we were very pleased, we got $40 million in-kind support grant from Siemens Product Life Technical Management. That is, our students will have now access to software that is only available to the topmost universities in the country. That is, that they will be studying with a software that they might use if they have a job in a corporation. And Siemens valued it about $40 million of the software that comes. And Dr. Ahad Ali from School of Engineering, College of Engineering, was the main person who wrote the proposal. Then another thing that is very important, because like Southfield, for the urban development, our students, we have four studios in the city of Detroit, and doing architecture planning, transportation planning. But four studios are going to be now combined in a consolidated form in Sue Mosley Midtown Development. So we're going to have one building, and we have received $300,000 grant from Zaske Foundation to develop that program in Midtown. So you will have a Lawrence Tech board right on the Woodward Avenue, where we will be working for city planning, urban planning, and our students are already designing models of city planning of the new emergence of city of Detroit. And it'll be called Detroit Center for Design and Technology, Lawrence Tech. We also have, obviously, a great collaboration with corporations such as Ford, Johnson &amp; Co., DTE, Denso, Lear, and many more, given the time we have, I will admit that. So we are here now to tell you how proud we are to be in Southfield, city of Southfield, and how grateful we are for the support we continually receive from the city, and will continue to call on you for further support. And we are ready to be able to help you in any way you could find us of any assistance in academic programs, or any program the city wants to launch in which we could provide expertise. So this is a great time for Lawrence Tech, a great time, I think, for the city, to merge as partners, so that the profile of Southfield is a lot higher in Oakland County and in this region. Because you have over 100 corporations, in fact, 500 in the city of Southfield. And that is unbelievable. That strength is extremely issue of pride for the city and for the university. If we can tap these resources and help them pour some student internships from Lawrence Tech, and do some scholarship for us, and these men and women will go and work at these companies, so you can retain, prevent the brain drain. You know, kids running back to other big cities, keep them here. Once they're here, they make a family, they buy a house, they raise children, the city benefits, from citizenry, from taxes, and all the economic benefits. I want to thank you all. There may be some other issues that I might discuss as we go along. I'm sure you have questions and any issues that I'll be very happy to address. We have with us experts from Lawrence Tech, and if I don't know the answers, I'm sure they would be able to help. And that might be the case.
Who do I call? Phil Fraser?
It's one light country. So with your permission, I'll stop for a while, and we'll invite any question you might have.
First of all, I wanted to say that two months ago, we had our city council visioning session. And one of the things that was on the top of our list was to strengthen the partnership with the LTU. So, plus, we're here this evening, but also, we've had communication back and forth, and we know that there's a virus of working hand in hand, as LTU has passed, but in to a greater extent in the future. So I'll open the floor to anyone who has some questions or comments. I have a question then, since I just sent anybody. We've proved a door month, and I'm hearing that maybe it's getting close now.
I will ask Dean Finn to address that.
We're at capacity. We will have about 600, close to 600 students living on our two housing units on our campus this fall. We also, as you are aware, the development at Arbor Lots, we've also contracted another 50 spaces, 48 spaces to be exact, and we'll be running students will be paying us to live there. And I'm sure students will fill in the remaining spots they have there as well. So, yes, we will need to add more housing here, because we project more growth in the future.
But you know where I'm going. There's something on the drawing board.
Yes. I think that, if I may, in the next board meeting, there's some positive progress expected.
Okay.
There was some conversation in this past meeting that happened this month, and although there's no guarantee, but we believe that the issue is moving forward. And if I may, on this topic, continue, a few more remarks. The community and neighborhood building is very important to us. Dean, Kevin Finn has created a lot of athletic programs, new students are coming in the dome. We are already subscribed. We believe when these changes are happening in the city, that the neighborhoods and the neighbors of Lawrence Tech are comfortable with this growth, so we'll have more students around. So we are doing something to take care of that. Dean and the students are making leaps in the neighborhood, and helping the social world of people who live around or in the back of, on the circle drive, addressing problems with the students. If students create noise or any difficulty, in some cases, they will actually be removed from the house, to make sure the neighbors are comfortable with this environment. We are also doing some outreach. I think August 5th, we have a barbecue plan for the neighborhoods. So we'll invite the men and women living in that area to come and get to know us, and vice versa. And last two years, I'm told, we invite Southfield Elementary School to Halloween party in the north housing unit. And it's been attended for more than 100 kids each year. So we are building that part of the community as well, that not only we are working at professional level, but also with the community that surrounds us, who live and work in the area.
Mr. Moss.
Oh, then Mr. Cassie. Yeah, I think this meeting is great. I think this partnership between the city and its biggest educational institution is important to cultivate. But I have two questions related to that, two different trains of thought. So one's really kind of looking high up, looking down. And I don't know if this is an answer that you have, or maybe it's a planning question. You know, East Lansing and Michigan State are synonymous, and to a degree, Ann Arbor and University of Michigan are synonymous. And we've taken steps, Mark Brooke sits on our Economic Development Committee, to make sure that, you know, we're doing everything proper, to make sure that the educational institution, the city of Southfield, becomes synonymous. But are there any, is there anything we're missing in that? Is there anything that, you know, that you might know that the city of Ann Arbor- Is there anything that, you know, that you might know that the City of Ann Arbor has enacted to make sure that it supports its university and that the University of Michigan supports the city, or the City of East Lansing and Michigan State? What more can we do? Because I think that this is something, you know, we're at a crossroads in terms of economic development, and we've got a lot of decisions to make as we climb out of this recession. And I can see just this, a natural partnership, because you're not going anywhere. You're kind of landlocked in Southfield, and we want to keep you here, and you obviously are staying here. So what can we do together as we move forward kind of into our next fifty years as a city? What partnerships do you see that exist with other universities and cities?
Well, I think though, that there are many elements of this partnership that are visible. But I want to acknowledge President Cyberg that the most recent brochure that lists actually Lawrence Tech, the picture of it, that the City of Southfield is proud to have a world-class university. That's the first time I've seen that. This is the housing brochure that numberizes. It's a very beautiful brochure. I think that is a great step towards that goal. I think if we co-sponsor our programs, co-host our programs, if you involve us in some of your key program where the city is outreach to the university, and we can turn do the same. Some of our program, we have on the dais, the city representative. I think the image building that we are in this together, that we are co-sponsoring the growth of the area, that will very much be appreciated. If we go in the newspapers, if we have some newsworthy item in the local area, it would be very interesting. Bruce Annett is here, he is in charge of communication and marketing, that we find a way to correlate the city and the university. Because the more people hear this, the more perception will develop that we're doing it together. And Harvard has done that with Google, with other companies, and they're two hundred years old. I mean, that is, they have some edge over us, given their history. MSU had the same thing because they are signed into law by Abraham Lincoln, almost under fifty, two hundred years ago. First land-grant university in the country. So they have a different legacy, and they have worked on these issues for a long time. I think we have the leadership available now in this room and those who are not here who have desired that we work together because it really raises the city and it raises us as a institution.
Dr. Martin, can I add something?
Please.
There's a couple pieces that we've really been working hard on, and when I say we, I mean all of us. Through the city center and some of the planning that's gone on, the idea of a walkable community and making things more accessible to people is very, very important to college students. Maybe not to us old folks, but, you know, the college kids like to walk around. But the second piece is having places for them to go. Because for students, if you think about Ann Arbor or you think about East Lansing, there's a lot of activity in the community. There's places for them to go, whether it's bars or restaurants or what they call the third place, the hangout places. Those things are important. So as we work to build the community on campus, the student community on campus, and give them things to do while they're at our campus, we also have to look to the city to say, what can we do around us? And, you know, Hassan's done, done a lot with the things that he's been involved with. But those are really important because when you think about students and you think about East Lansing or Ann Arbor, which really gives you a them in many ways, there's just lots of stuff for them to do. So I think that those are two areas that are really important in terms of growing and making us become a little more symbiotic.
I'll expand on that too, because I completely agree with you. And, you know, I don't know if I want, I definitely want to hear my colleagues' opinions on this as well. But for me personally, I would love to see a fusion between this city hall campus and Lawrence Tech's campus. We were talking, Hassan Jawan and I met last week to talk about some economic development stuff, and he sits on the committee too, and we talked about Lawrence Tech, you do, you know, the Winter Fest. Wouldn't it be great if you could use our ice arena to do some of those things? Or, you know, there are times where we're sitting in a council meeting upstairs, and I look at the guy playing frisbee, you know, on our front lawn, wishing, maybe I was out there rather than in here. But, you know, these are things that we can probably make good use as we are trying to figure out how to fuse a walkable community across Evergreen and have a linkage. I know that there's going to be a midway crosswalk too, to the front lawn of City Hall. I'd love to see some activity from Lawrence Tech on our front lawn. I'd love to see the volleyball courts or anything made use of by Lawrence Tech students. So if there's a, if there's a next step that comes out of this meeting, I'd really like to see how the city can partner with the university to make use of some of our facilities in a partnership, you know, a financial partnership, and in the heart of the word, a good relationship with the university.
Linda, there was some property you want to talk about?
And actually, Terry was involved. We've been looking with Terry's house at property in the area. There were some we looked at that the city actually owned, that maybe we could do some, of course, because as a finance person, I wanted to get it for free. But to use for some of our athletic events, especially just training, you know, just practice. It's hard to get enough places to do that. And so we have been working with Terry to kind of look to see what's available, what's around that maybe we work into that kind of idea.
For example, with the athletics, what you might not realize is twenty different schools that come to our campus. And many of the first time they've been to Southfield, they're mentioning our Southfield. One thing, one of the things that we did at all of our games, is we do announce, welcome to Southfield, you know, the center of it all. The brand app with our, you know, the magic of Lawrence Tech up our Southfield. We do use the ice arena for Winter Fest. The other thing is, our students, you know, I think it's getting their artwork and they work with the community, get more artwork out. One of the suggestions our students had for us this year was, like, with an expansion banners. In Mount Pleasant, when they have their homecoming, the community and the university create banners to represent whatever the theme is that year for the homecoming. It's on all the streets in the community. And on our end, it would be, you know, I think of when I go to some other towns that are cities and colleges together, there are a lot of signs that you know right away when you walk in, say that you have town with the university and the city are together. I think some more work on some ideas like that, maybe open up some opportunities there.
You do actually have the entrance ways to the city.
True.
Home of Lawrence Tech.
Right.
We are promoting it right there.
Right, true. Exactly.
I think when we, if I may add, let me answer to your question. When we started our basketball season after forty, fifty years of hiatus, we had midnight madness. It was hellful. The mayor of the city was there, and there were people, men and women, families, and some citizens from Southfield came. So I'd like to invite all of you. I think you cannot get a better price for just coming there and see real games where people actually, the students do wonders things. We actually won a buddy, beat Denver, which was in final four in some game. So we're just starting now, but it is one area where Southfield community could say, we have a place here within Southfield to go to games. Bring your children, you know, your relatives and friends, and we can announce that through the city as well. And we have many games, and if you could come in. Given my experience in Rochester, when they started Division Two, there were hardly any people in the audience. Then they moved to Division One, they won one of you two games, they go to NCAA. Now the whole city in Rochester, Pontiac, people come from other areas. Because rather than going to a professional game that costs you four hundred dollars for beer and popcorn and tickets, you could do this in twenty dollars at some of the places. In our case, it's free.
For now, it's free.
Can you send us the schedules, Dr. Martin? Perhaps you ought to send us the schedule. I would just ask, with your permission, to mention which sports we have, and let me mention some, and then we'll ask the dean if I missed them. We have men's and women's basketball, bowling, cross-country, lacrosse, and soccer. Women's volleyball and men's hockey. More programs are to be added. Dean, can you?
You covered it. A couple of girls' sports will be tennis and golf. The bigger ones right now are lacrosse, that's what we beat Butler in actually with lacrosse. We probably would have thrown them their basketball team last year since their coaches got hired by the Celtics. But we did, interesting enough, in hockey, our first victory this year was when Northwestern, you know, Evanston, Illinois, came to Southfield and played us, and we did beat them five to three that night. So, and they're a couple leagues up ahead of us, so that was a big victory for our boys.
Mr. Carty, you want to, if you think of this more?
I just wanted to mention, I attended Lawrence Tech in the fifties, I didn't say that. Not Obama or Tompkins, but, again, I've always had the most pride in attending there and knowing that LCU was in the city that I was raised in. There've been many, many things over the years that we have been partners in. The Smart Zone in two thousand one, the composite bridge, or just go on and on, the hockey team. And there's so many things that we've worked on things together. I have been fortunate, I had a restaurant, I had Northwestern, and Ted Malburn, and I got to know a lot of the students and the trainees, brothers and sisters and all those. I can attest that at that time, I thought that what Southfield was really lacking is density of students. And to make anything happen, including the business community, they are the ones who spend money, not totally, but they really are the base of a growing community. But I think this in the LCU magazine, I just said, or I said, I looked at that and I said, community college town. And, you know, I sit back and say, you know, where is Southfield? Where are we going to be in the future? We, you know, thirty million square feet of office space, we have the business address in southeast Michigan. But right now, you know, we're kind of somewhere in between all of it. And we really need, outside of the center of it all, we have to say, what does it need to be in the center of it all? I mean, what's your activities? What are you going to base your future on? And I think that's where, I think, thinking and vision kind of gets lost, and we have to bring it back to center. And how we do that, I think, is, number one, how can LCU help us get to the future and become the center of it all? I'd like to see, I know that Jeremy mentioned getting, you know, the school more on this side of the expressway. I think the loss are a good start. But, you know, when I see the dormitories going over to Central Park, Circle Drive, I said, boy, if we could only have, got our business community in it, and have a mixed use where we could have students and commercial mix so that they could support the businesses that come here. And when the businesses find out how much they spend, what the things that they need, they would come in because they want to make money. You know, they won't come here unless they know they can make money. And so I think it's very important that we continue a very strong relationship with LCU. And I think that the benefit will be on our belief that we become, you know, maybe not a full college, probably not University of Michigan or Michigan State or whatever. But I do believe that we need, the university needs to be expanding. You know, I talked to you at the Economical Club about school of poverty. And I think that whatever we can do, whatever we can do to assist you, I think we should try to do it. You know, the city has a lot of challenges. You know, Mr. Schrecker, they've had to our attention quite often. You know, we were valued somewhere in the neighborhood of three billion seven at one time. Now we're around two billion three, two billion four. Our auditor says that they can't believe that we were still the hit that we took. But we're coming back. We're coming back, and I think that LCU is going to help us come back. We are going to be meeting with some of the owners at the city center and seeing whether or not they can contribute and help out more than they presently are in making this thing happen. I think it'd be beneficial to all of us, including them, who own property here, that we compete, compete in the marketplace. And I'm willing to meet that challenge. I'm willing to compete against anything that is happening around us and bring back the prestige that we've had and will continue to have. But I think we really have to look seriously at how much LCU can help us expand.
Well, I think if we can build bridges, not literally, but both in collaboration and physically, across the freeway, so that it's a bit more free mobility for students, particularly, we have six hundred four students. They don't have cars, you know, they need, and they have money, so they come from another family, to eat, to maybe have a drink, or whatever they are interested in. I want to share.
If you've got a great light on the bottom.
Yeah. I want to share one example with you. Now, we have a town, Royal Oak. We're not here to push another town, but just for argument, they do not have a university. They don't have a major college. Yet, the young people are flocking around all over there. I think if we create an environment for young people to be here, not only Lawrence Tech, it will draw students from other areas. I think we need to think about that, that we create an environment for young kids to be in the area, whether it is a sports bar, and I don't want to use the word bar, but regardless it's being used, or some opportunity for young people to spend an afternoon or evening. And they don't have to, they're Lawrence Tech students, as the indication is. Some cities have no university, yet they have created opportunities for young people to be there, and they're coming from all over. But we will continue to work in that regard. I think one way we can be stranding potential people who want to move their businesses to Lawrence, Southfield. I think city can promote by saying, should you move your business to Southfield, we have workforce available right from Lawrence Tech. The state-of-the-art workforce in technology, technology are the middle name. We can make that firm so capable that they can outcompete any other business in the use of technology. And most businesses need technology. So a lot of times, businesses move if they have a workforce available for them to grow, and we can supply that.
You know, they used to laugh when they were doing US Ten, and I said, well, why don't you do what it is in Old Park to go over there with a, it is, the parent states, we don't have money, the feds don't have it. But I would really recommend to have a plaza like the other two that exists over the expressway or six ninety-six, which would really bring that university right into the center. And, but, you know, I think we have the technology and the brains to find out how we could maybe do that. I don't know to what extent. I know that Wooden Bridge, they put that silly thing up, was an attempt to make us come closer together, but, I mean, that was always a joke. But anyways, but I think in the future, you know, they're still doing it. You go out further northwest, you'll see they're putting in big walkways over the expressway, and that's why I challenge the state. I mean, we need to bring the university over to our side of the street.
I've got so many things going through my head at this point. I think for a long time, LCU and the City of Southfield took each other for granted. I think we all agree, you know, we just took each other for granted. I think maybe I have a different kind of appreciation for LCU because I worked for so long, most of my career, in the auto loan supplier industry. My best friend's father graduated from LCU. I heard about LCU all the time. He was an inventor. He was with Excella Corporation, he started his own business. I mean, I grew up with this from a teenager, young teenager, to hearing about, even though I lived in Detroit, hearing about LCU. And I've always said to our staff, it's huge to have LCU here. It's huge. No, you're not University of Michigan or Michigan State, but you're LCU. A great technical university. I mean this, I think it's a huge trust. But I also think having taken each other for granted, now that we've seen what's going on, we can work so well together. I can see many, many opportunities to do that. And one of the best, and I think, is in advertising. And I think we've already discussed that. When we do stuff, we, when we go on second, we work with you, and we ought to have collaborative groups working on these separate projects. But that is huge. To me, the biggest advantage, let's say, to our growth, aside from the students and aside from developing new schools, is the high-tech businesses that you can introduce to Southfield. introduce to Southfield and bring into this community. That's because we need, we need to get our business base back. But I'm extremely proud of LTU being there, I always have, I would fight to the death if you told me you were going to leave. I'm, I'm serious about this, I, I think, I just have a, a great admiration for LTU and the people that I've known there, the staff. But now, we're seeing, okay, we do need each other, and we're both going to survive and grow by working together, and we need to, I think we built the bridges in terms of friendships and personal relationships.
I think it's growing.
It is growing, but we need to do practical things, things that you can see. And I think in the publications, and in the, whether we call it advertising or just, you know, public communication, that's huge, that we each recognize the other, our base will grow. I can't imagine being in Southfield without LTU, and I've always felt that way, I, I think it's huge for us, and I'm, I'm excited.
We're, we're very proud to be in Southfield, and we're here today.
I'm proud to be in Southfield, too.
So Terry and I were talking, just before the meeting started, about the publication. And what a wonderful expression of that partnership about having the vision of the city center in there. And I think that having this in the publication, so that magazine is online right now, you can go to the LTU site, and there's a digital version of it, and we can send you that link.
What is the magazine?
The magazine that's in, in your, in your folder.
I've got lots in my folder.
The one?
Oh, Lord, okay, okay.
And, and so that's a digital copy now, so you can go online and get that, and electronically. So, so it's easy to send that around to other people. And so I think we have an opportunity right here to be able to expand on, on this publication and these articles, to have the city pick some of that up, and, and, and see how, see where we can take this. And I think it's just a great opportunity, to kind of expand a little bit on, on your ideas about that. I think the other thing is, is that we work very closely with Al and the, and the Southfield Downtown Development Association, and we had some early on work about, you know, focus on medical technologies. And I think that, you know, that, that's, that's a niche that we can, we are developing within Lawrence Tech, and that the community is developing, and I think that we have an opportunity to connect those two in a very strong way, especially with the alliance with Providence. I think that's one of the outcomes that the obesity project comes, it gives us a, gives us a pilot to do, but it also, we're also working with Providence. I think we had fifteen faculty members meet up with about ten or twelve of their researchers, and trying to identify research projects that we can advance. And then we also have, at Lawrence Tech, we have entrepreneurial collaboratories, so we, we, it's our entrepreneurial initiative to help commercialize technology, our student projects. And so in the recent Engineering Society Detroit publication, there's an article about the collaboratory and our partnership with the city and the, the Southfield Chamber of Commerce. And so about a month ago, we had a breakfast sponsored by Lawrence Tech, the city's so shelly was there, and then, and then the chamber, and we offered that services up to the community to help them grow their businesses. And so we're hitting a variety of these things at different levels. And so I, I think that, you know, the tactical aspects of what you're talking about, we're doing some of those, and the more that we can do, the more that we can sort of push across the goal line and, and showcase that these are wins, I think are, are going to just help build that, that solidarity.
I think the same, and everything that we put out in home, it's one psychologically universal, and we do the same thing, you know, in the Southfield. That, that just becomes an automatic thing, and people recognize that that's where one psychologically university is, and it's in the Southfield, vice versa. So it becomes tangible, it's only great.
Well, another thing that I may call on all of you, because I am not new to the area, but new to Southfield in the working. I believe there are a lot of men and women or families or corporations with wealth within the city. I said that, that there are cities which were of ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, not even on the map, they are now major economic powers, because the rich men and women in the city invested in the city. They made building, nursing schools, and dormitories, they put their own money, not the state money. And as a result, Grand Valley is one example, it was, there was nothing around there, now you see soup, drowning. And if we had a chance to go and work with folks in the city, who are fortunate enough to have ability to support the university and the city, they could be partnered with us in, investing in the city, in some of the areas which the tax dollar cannot. So it's just an idea, one to plan, if we could be connected to them, I know that they are, they are in the city.
I'm not sure where can we put them.
I think it would be a good thing to explore that.
Well, that's what I should say.
Explore that, because I'm sure they are all there, and they could, if they live and aren't here, or if not what live here, they have a stake in the city. So I'd like to.
Segue is a tactic, segue is that they did Mr. Malburn, who wanted to say something.
You've done a great job in terms of describing everything you've done at Lawrence Tech and collaboration efforts. First of all, I, I know that Lawrence Tech has been always renowned for engineering and architecture, and I know that you're expanding out some of the, the major areas that you're trying to cover, and so that's something which is fantastic, and the voice got to get around Golden Horn, to, to the entire region, to think of Lawrence Tech besides those areas of expertise, because there is a shortage of engineers in general.
Absolutely.
But I hear that continuously, we go up to meetings and trying, and unfortunately too many gray hairs, engineers are out there, not enough younger ones.
Well, they say that, picking up on your remarks, that for every five position of engineers available, they only have two qualified engineers available. There's three positions that open, and we are not producing enough, hopefully our enrollment will go higher enough, so we will be able to meet some of those demands.
That's our nation, that's our problem.
Uh, nationwide, absolutely, nationwide. I, I think the issue goes on a national level. Our, our funding for higher education nationally and statewide had decreased, even though dollar wise, but not percentage wise, based on today's dollar. India's Prime Minister, Mr. Monson, when he was re-elected for the second time, next day he announced there will be twenty more IITs, supported by federal money. IIT, one IIT, now they say is equal to Harvard and MIT. No graduate of IIT is ever unemployed, they, they set, they set up the Silicon Valley, thirty-five percent of Microsoft are those guys. NASA has thirty percent of their employees. So I think those are engineers, technology people, and they devise new, you know, new products which the whole world wants. All you need is one factory here, coming up with a new technology tool that the whole world wants, it can happen here in Southfield. So I think we have that opportunity to invest in the city, invest in our infrastructure, hoping that with this approach, one or two or three discoveries will be made in the city, that can bring different attention and broader economic power to us, as many as possible.
So one of the areas which I think also, because of the growth and, and potential growth, is we want to really grow our economic base over in Southfield. And so part of that is really to have incubators, the business incubators, and that's where we, I could see potential partnership between the city and Lawrence Tech, to be able to grow, because if you look at Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor has grown exponentially because of the incubators, they get the graduates to stick around and to, to grow potential companies that they're going to grow, they're going to grow near the university, to piggyback on the university's, their resources that are available there, that, that entrepreneurs need. And so that's one of the things, like you have tech town, we need to get our own tech town over here to, to make that happen in Southfield.
I think we have that ability, if we launch that effort.
Dr. Margot, is there anything that we need to do now on the pediatric obesity initiatives? Is there anything else that? We have to, a piece in our package, and I'm wondering, I know, is it something you're, you're launching, but perhaps it's something that we could help promote?
Well, I, I think if the city can champion this partnership along with us, and Mark has been working on our behalf, is Providence, and then I've been working with the city's school, maybe I'll ask him to make some comments.
Sure, I think, I think one of the things that we're looking at now is creating a work group. So thank you for your letter of support and for the overall, you know, concept support. But, and so we met with Providence on, on Friday, and, and so they, they are, they designated one person, and they're looking to designate maybe one or two other people. And so we have two faculty members that are working on this, and so now we need to formulate the work group to make sure, to see where, we need to investigate where the strengths are, and where some gaps are, and where we can connect it. For example, do we connect to the kids' zone right next door? Or how do we? Or Parks and Rec? And so who within the city would be that champion to be on that team, that can be the, the representative? And so I think that would be the next step, is identifying who that person in the city are, two, couple people would be that can sort of help us put that together.
I noticed that you have some extra packets.
Yes.
Just a suggestion, really, that comes to the city administrator, but in the audience tonight, we have a representative from Parks and Rec, as well as community relations. Just a suggestion. Also, I read with interest, and we had talked about this several months ago, the global village project, and see that you tested all fleshed out, was there anything the city could do in support of this?
I would like.
Great itinerary, program they're offering.
I think if we can promote the idea, we can expand the program, and because people are coming from, out of city, out of state, they could live in the, in the city duration of the program. Initially, we are offering a certificate program, we hope to expand on it, this is the first year we're launching. And I think there'll be an opportunity for us to share with them, brochures of the city, as we go back after the program, and we come back for another round.
We, we'd also offer a city tour.
I, I think that'll be, that'll be very much appreciated.
I would. I've never been, uh, in, in, past this.
I, I will bring it to our coordinator's attention, that she could contact the city. And, and once people are here from other towns, they can actually tour the city and learn about it. You know, there are Fortune 500 companies, the other businesses, yeah, the night, I love, I think the, the city has many interesting things to offer to a visitor, and it's up to us how we present it.
That's a mark.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll follow up on something we had discussed at one of our council meetings in June, I think. I brought up the fact that I was listening to Channel nine five five, which is the radio station, in, in the morning, Mojo in the morning, and they were having a town tour of different, you know, localities in southeast of Michigan, and every Friday throughout the summer, they were going to broadcast out of a different point of interest in the city. And I was talking with Michael Mannings, who's now doing the community relations, and we both talked about, let's, let's apply for that, see if we can get a morning spent in Southfield at Lawrence Tech. So I could follow up with somebody, maybe Mark or, I can follow up this weekend, let's submit an application and partnership together, and, and highlight the city in the, in the region. You know, we were thinking, we were picking our brains about what locations we would want, and we thought Lawrence Tech was just a natural fit, so that's something I'll follow up on, and I think we should submit, get a morning to highlight the Southfield Lawrence Tech in southeast of Michigan.
I can just add, you know, just to get at the station, our homecoming on that Friday, October eleventh, our act that night is Sky Blue, who you didn't know from like Alan Maysell, their father music.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be a natural fit, I'd say.
That'd be great, yeah, so I'll, I'll follow up on that, because they were at Warren City Hall last Friday, and they could go to Southfield City Hall, but why not get some excitement with Lawrence Tech, too?
I'd like to just ask on the concert that you're having, where is that going to be taking place?
I feel house, we do it, so.
Yeah, what's your capacity over there?
Wow, for the concert that night, probably around a thousand people taking there.
That's what I think I've been talking about, in terms of having, right now, we have so many people between your campus and all the office buildings, I mean, thousands and thousands of office workers. And what I was, what I was looking forward to is having some type of an outdoor concert event, where we can have either between the front lawn or the city, city center area, I mean, something that, that will bring kids off the campus, as well as the office workers that stay at the work, and have some type of like a community event that, that's going to be, you know, not, not radical, radical, but enough that's.
That works fine.
Empty cage or type of outside activity.
That's the main goal, is to really have something to feel that it's more than just pop a pot, get out of town, and that's it, or, or it's at the campus, they finish their lessons, and they're gone. I mean, you want to see that carryover for the city. Anyone else?
One, one final observation, we said we're still technically answering questions, perhaps we should think about formalizing an agreement within the city and Lawrence Tech. This was done by some institutions, for example, I was part of that previously with the City of Rochester and Oakland University, the mayor, or the city council, and then they sat down and, and worked. The point is, if it gets into the paper, broader community knows that Detroit and suburb, that Lawrence Tech and Southfield have committed to work together, and it's become the, you know, university talent.
I like that idea.
I think that's great.
I think if you add the visibility, and people formally see, oh, there is a formal commitment here, because.
People think, no, they won't take, no, I, I agree, it's going to take some work to do that, but, but, I mean, we could do that, could be a general kind of statement.
You could, you, one meeting, and the person represented in the city and Lawrence Tech would sit down, like few stands in time, and.
But something that, something that's been publicized, is what you're looking for, and I agree.
I think everything helps in that regard.
Sure does, sure does.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to see you put together someone from Southfield to work with LTU, to either a legal department or maybe relations with someone to, who could Lawrence Tech to draw up such a document, bring it before council.
Okay, you're supportive?
Oh, I'll help.
I'm supportive?
Sure.
All right, we'll make it happen.
If I could just give a note of caution, I mean, that, nothing, we do have another university, I mean, a couple OCCs in town over here, and I just don't want them to feel totally surprised that we've ignored them, that's the only caution that we just, I mean, we definitely want to have that strong bond of LTU.
Oh, no, absolutely, we would, actually, we would like to have a relationship with them as well. OCC has four, five campuses, they are not all in Southfield. We are only your town.
I don't, I don't see a complex, I mean, we have, we have not only OCC, we have a lot of online campuses, we really do, and we, we're trying to publicize that, but there's only one LTU.
There's only one holy and university.
Right, and also a highly questionable university, you're the only one here, very different.
The, we, on our council, we have someone who likes to sit back, he's our deep thinker, and so he's been listening, so Mr. Fraser, our, my, your, Bruce.
Well, you really set me up for that. So, one of the things that was the white paper in the, in the brochure, that, or the book that you just handed out, and did make it to the table this evening, and that is the pediatric obesity, I think we need to think about that, because it's such a real problem in our communities, and I can visualize, I was sitting here trying to visualize, how could that work? And it could not only work with, between Lawrence Tech and the city, but it could also be part of our hospital center, the, you know, to get everyone involved, and, and our schools, in trying to combat this. And I think that if we want to put our name on the map, that if we could find the man- that if we could find the magic formula for how do we get in front of this, I think it's something that we could probably bottle up itself. But, but I think it's such an important thing, and we, and we keep talking about it, scratching ahead, how do we, how do we solve this problem? But, you know, it's the fast foods, it's the economics of the community, it's, it's the, at home, it's the training at home, it's, it touches all phases of our community.
And I think our proposal really accomplishes what you just over there. So we will work with Providence Hospital and their physicians, nutritionists.
Right.
New mothers, when the baby is delivered, we start training right from then on.
Yes.
And the high, the school system has committed. They will talk about exercise for all the students required, and what type of vending machines will be in the school system.
Right.
And there'll be educational component on the value of being fit or physically. And we will have academic programs, which have psychology and sociology involved.
Right.
And the city has the power to make regulations that might help when we implement some of these issues. Some of them have bigger issues, you know, who approves them? Cities, that their city comes in by saying, this is good, we're gonna approve this, or support you in that area. So this is a great partnership, this is a community project, not Lawrence Tech.
Absolutely. Instead of it being a, a fat city, we could be the fit city. Yes. I think what, the other thing you mentioned is selling it, right? And so everyone that we've talked to, State Senator Vince Gregory, State Representative Rudy Hobbs, our Providence, our other partners, you know, all say that Congressman Kerry Peters' office, they all view this as an opportunity to pilot this in Southfield, and work through all the details to then be able to have, be a model for the rest of the state, and possibly the country. And so, we're encouraged by, by, by having everyone say that it needs to be tied to the Governor's Health Support Card, and that Senator Gregory is on the Appropriations Committee for Community Health, and he's put us in touch with those folks, and he wants to make us, have us present to them this year. And so, and really take it to the next level of really talking about that. So I think that, that's the idea here, that there's a lot of work to do to make the pilot work. But as we do it, and after we do it, that's, we really expand this beyond Southfield. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Lance?
I have one suggestion.
Yes, sir.
I urge you to meet the school board. Not only the board, but the superintendent, and all the, all the, all the big boys and little boys.
Yes, sir.
And see what they say to you. I have personally visited the school, met with the superintendent and her whole staff. They are excited about it.
They are?
Yes, indeed. And they want to do it. They are more eager than we are. They were very happy that we approached them, and they are very much interested to launch this program. I personally went to the school and met with the superintendent's staff, and also met her at different times, and she was-
How do you, what arrangements did you make to finance?
Well, this idea was germinated when I met with the CEO of Calhoun Foundation, who foundation funds such programs. So, they, he asked me that if you have this good idea, put it on a paper, white paper, and give us, give us a paper that he can put together for his finance foundation grant committee. It is in their hand right now. If they like this idea, they will ask us to add a full proposal. At that time, the representatives from the city, and different representatives from the four parties will come together, put a detailed proposal into place again. Even in the case it is not funded by them, there are many agency and foundations who will be very excited to fund it, and we will move it around anywhere possible for funding. The base funding would be available from Lawrence Tech for our academic program. But to launch it at different levels, with hospitals, the city, and the school system, we will need some sort of a grant funding. And at the moment, the Calhoun Foundation is interested to look at it. And there are many foundations who will be very happy to consider this type of program. Try to raise their profile too, if they support such programs.
I, I agree with you, and, but I don't know how our city and the position we are involves our money.
Well, I, of course, if you have money, I'll take it. But we are not asking for money at this time. Thank you. But I, I think we were envisioning cities' role in some policy matters. Because if we're gonna do this program in the city of Southfield as a pilot project, a pilot city, there may be times when we have to work around the school system, or some sign aid, or, or some other regulation the city has, that's where we will need city support. We did not think initially that cities would be funding this program, but helping us in legal terms, policy terms, to promote this.
But the other, the other aspect of that is, you have, the, one of the things is to identify what's already working. So if something's already working, like the mayor's walk, or different things, you can capitalize on the things that are working, and have the, all the groups leverage what is working, and then come together on areas that need to be addressed. And it may be time and commitment, or redirection of effort, and it may not just be outlet of cash to make it happen. It's having all the parties get around the table and say, this is really good, we need help over here. How can we bring people resources or other resources to bear here? And, and we have a, from the financial side, we have four or five foundations already identified that have health and nutrition as part of their giving. And, and so, as we craft the proposal, we'll be able to talk to them about it.
You know, we're just having a little sidebar here, and, please, repeat what you said to me about inviting our, our staff to be involved in this.
We, our medical program is self-funded, to a point, okay? So there's participation, and if we have good experience, our results has been cost savings. Our work is top program, is self-funded to a certain degree with, with umbrella coverage for catastrophic situations. But again, savings there. Good things experience their results in cost savings.
True, true.
We, we have outstanding track record for many years, but we're always looking for improvement despite the way we've been participating.
And, and I have some more questions. Absolutely, sir. Let me mention one more thing that is, that has a future potential of saving a lot of money for the city or community. We are now seeing nationwide that diabetes type two, which are usually in adults later on, in, in older people, now it is showing up in young boys and girls because of obesity. Usually they have type one genetic, but now they're having type two because of their health. So if you consider that, if they are part of your system of a family which is insured, and that the kid has type two diabetes, now you have lifelong expense for that family. Insulin injection and all the material. So I think this program will help not only the national or city health, but economic health of the city. If they live and work here, a lot of kids are gonna be healthier, then some of them become diabetes type two.
Mr. Lance, a final word, and then we'll wrap things up.
Listen, I, I am all for you, and I have some ideas, but I can't plan it, council or anyone. My ideas don't have to be talked about, and I'd like to meet with you, and, and I want to talk.
Just be, like, if you have my thoughts, and we, we're gonna have some ideas.
Funding costs, and funding of your projects, for example, and, 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 and.
Um, we wanna thank you very much, Dr. Magill and your staff for joining us this evening. This has been a very positive session, so we look forward to continuing to work together in strengthening our relationship. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. I wanna be back at 6:55. We have communications, and then we have a speaker coming at seven o'clock.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Three seconds for five minutes? I'll take a look at that one. I'm probably doing it.
No. Looking at the picture, so, it concerns me that we're in the picture of, I mean, I have a close-up. Although I can certainly see it being seen there. So this is, this is my reading, I'm just watching. Oh, that's, well, that's, that's, you gotta, the reason that it's new, you think.
But you better, you better see the picture. All right, we're back in session. I'm going to change the agenda just very slightly, and go to communications. And the first person to be asked to speak this evening is Pamela Gerald. Let the record show that she's not in attendance. The second person who's asked to be recognized this evening is Mr. Gregory Rose. Mr. Rose, you may come up, actually, so that you can be heard. Have a seat in front of that microphone there, at the end of the table. And as I indicated to you on the telephone, you know you have five minutes. Also, that you are not to mention anyone by name regarding your concern. And anytime you'd like to begin, Flora's here, sir.
Okay. Um, the issue I have is basically dealing with one of the departments of the city. I, about a year and a half, almost two years, picked up a property on the street that I reside on. And the mem, the member of, the person that had the house, they told us that, you know, there were, they had a lot of issues going on there. The house was paid for, she owes back taxes. Said, if we take care of back taxes, that she would give us the property. Because she felt there was other things going on to where somebody wanted her property. So we went to court with her, because the city attorney wanted to meet us and assure that the property was being transferred. At that time, I was told that the property was impacted by mold, and it needed to be tore down. I myself have twenty-some years in environmental field, so I questioned the person concerning this property. And no testing, anything was done. This was dismissed, but this was the beginning of it. We've been running into one problem after another here. I've been making calls, trying to get some solution to this, and I'm just meeting dead ends, and this is why I'm here. Currently, right now, we did have a permit to start construction, which was issued about nine months ago. It's a six-month permit, and if you, it's a homeowner's permit. When you pull in, you go in, you get your permit, and then if you don't, if you're not finished, you go in, and you get an, an extension, which is common with many homeowners. Now, this house, the prior owners were hoarders. And I have, I can produce about seven dumpsters of content that I pulled out of this house. It's about 1,200 square foot house, and that was just contents. Um, so when my permit expired, we went for the renewal, and that was in April. At this point right now, I still do not have my permit. And I have all my emails, I made copies, if anybody wants to look at them. We contacted them every other day, be it via phone or email. Trying to get a resolution.
To building department, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, this is not being done. Now-
We'll take, I'd like to give the emails to the city administrator, for he'll, be the person handling.
Now, I, you know, I'm not looking for any special attention or any special privileges. I just wanna be treated equal. Now, these employees, I, I'm aware of what a building inspector is, because I myself am an inspector. I've worked for the Michigan land bank, and I'm the one that decides which houses get demoed. So I do have qualifications in this field. I mean, I'm not gonna get into a match with the people on it. I haven't discussed it with them. I just, I've been rolling with it, trying to pass by the situation. But it's been to the point where I don't think it's being passed by. I mean, if I could've got my permit, I could've got contractors in early. Now, the cost for me to hire a contractor, it's gonna jump thirty, forty percent, because it's peak season now. So that is, and that, I'm just burdening on me, you know. There's, it's been a long, ongoing issue, and it's just, I wanna resolve, and I'm trying to find some type of mediation to this, right?
I've, after I spoke with you on the phone last evening, I indicated with the city administrator, he indicated to me that he will get on this immediately and look into this.
I mean, so there's, there's a lot of things going, because one of the things I was told as a homeowner, I wasn't allowed to have my son come help me on the property. You can contact the state, that's not the case, that is not code enforcement. Now, I'm a cancer survivor, and just came through a freaking ass surgery about five years ago, so my movement's limited. So, I mean, forcing me to do all this work, when I, I can be bringing my son, but I'm being told I can't. And there is no law that states I can't. You know, and, like I said, I brought a limited amount of paperwork, just relevant. If you want any supplemental, I am more than willing to supply it, and I have no problem with that. I, if you, if you want to, the people that live on the left or right across the street, they will tell you that I have done 200% improvement on this house. This house was a mess. The people that lived in it, they didn't have running water, they didn't have electricity. They heated themselves during the winter by a fireplace. They were going to the bathroom in bags. You know, so I had quite a mess to clean up when I took over this house. And we did assist them into moving into proper facilities, in my own extent.
All right, your time is up.
Okay.
Mr. Schreit indicated to me that he will move into this. Sir, the phone number that you gave us, is that the number, or you wish to be contacted by, or do you have a cell phone, or?
That's the number.
That's the number.
Yep.
All right, we'll work into this tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Mr. Magill?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that to our attention. And Mr. Chair, I think, I think it's maybe for my own benefit, maybe for the benefit of the rest of the council, we should have kind of a dialogue with the building department too. Have a maybe a similar session to the ones we've been holding downstairs, just to get a better grasp of the issues that they're dealing with, how we can best provide support to them. Um, because there are some things that-
And so we appreciate that, that you're on. We'll look into this and find out what we can do to...
Yes, this house was only five blocks down from my house, and I was looking to, it's been a nice walk of years. Looking at the minutes.
Thank you for the information. All right, thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we're going to move to the second item on our agenda, which has been referred from the legislative committee. And I'm going to turn to Mr. Muggill.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Legislative committee met on June 25th, and among the items on our agenda, the legislative committee is here in full, it's myself, councilwoman Seymour and councilwoman Frazier. Among the items that we took up was an issue that was, came on our radar from activist, citizen activist, UniRose. And it was, she's part of the State Fairgrounds Coalition, which is having, which is examining a proposal to develop the State Fairgrounds. And she wanted to draw to our attention that some of the issues on the plan didn't necessarily meet the community benefits, including lack of a public transit option, lack of mixed-use development, basically in opposition to a big-box development. So we took a look at it, we heard from a presenter who gave us an alternative plan that seemed fine enough, but we also, as a committee, made a unanimous decision that if we were going to weigh in on this, one way or another, and Ferndale had taken a stand on it to make a resolution in sorts to the governor to say, before you rush for a big-box plan, this is state land, this is what our vision would want to be. So this council wanted to, the committee wanted to bring it to full council tonight to hear from the people that UniRose is affiliated with. And then we also, I reached out to Tammy Salisbury of the Mount Boulevard Association to give a complete view. She has obviously history with the city and knows of the project. So at your discretion, we have Ken Weichel here at UniRose, and we have Tammy Salisbury. And then, again, our committee made a unanimous decision to bring this to council, so whether or not we send a resolution on behalf of council promoting mixed use and a better transit option through the state land, or perhaps a letter from our administrator. So I'll turn it right back to you.
Okay. Come in.
Yes.
Yeah, part of the committee, one of the things, when it was presented to us, we were a little hesitant about getting involved in it, because just recently, when we went through the 12-mile Southfield Road property, other communities sent resolutions to us about how they wanted us to make decisions in our city, and we got a little prickly about that. So we were, we were a little hesitant about getting involved with this, but what helped us along was, this is state property, this is not city property. So the committee that is going to make the decision on this was appointed by the governor, and so we felt very comfortable bringing the issue back to the whole council. So I just wanted to put that on the table so that when we start talking about it, we don't get, we don't feel like we're doing something that we got angry about when another community wrote us a resolution about 12-mile Southfield Road.
I'm going to call on Ms. Rose. And anybody who's going to speak can take a seat at the front table here and use the microphone.
Yes. Okay. I am, I am so happy to be here, and I know, and thank you, Councilwoman Frazier, for making it clear that this is not a city issue, it is a statewide issue, this is our land, nobody can take it away from us to give to somebody to do something for profit. I became involved in this when I, yes, with these gentlemen, Ken Weichel over here, Jim Kasha over there, they're handing out, he's handing out some information to you. And this is an alternate plan that is transit, public transit oriented. That's what we want you to see, because it will be a plan that will benefit the entire state, not just a few people. So I'm going to leave it up to Ken Weichel, who is the landscape architect that made this plan, and Jim, of course, will add whatever he can.
All right, I neglected Ms. Rose. People who come to council to give your address for the record, business address, or...
Certainly, so I, you know, I forgot, because what do I know? Anyway.
No, I forgot. Please.
UniRose 264-77, Franklin Point Drive, Southfield, 48034. Thanks.
You're welcome. Sir?
My name is Ken Weichel, 33203, Bitterstone Lane, Farmington Hills, Michigan, 48334. I was asked, our office was asked to prepare some visioning documents, some graphics for the State Fairgrounds Coalition, which is a citizens group of residents, nonprofits, business owners, civic associations in the Eight Mile Woodward area. So what I'll be presenting tonight is a little bit of history about the visioning and the direction that this group would like to see for the State Fairgrounds. So you have a group of materials. What I'm going to talk about first is kind of an introduction of the concept, I'm going to read a letter that I presented previously, then talk a little bit about placemaking, which is the governor's new incentive for old economy versus new economy, a little bit economics about the project that the citizens group is proposing, and then discuss who pays for this type of development, and then we can just entertain some questions and answers. If you want to look at the first group of documents, there's a, there's a map on the front of this one. This is the proposal by Magic Plus for this 157 acres, and then the Meadow Expo concept. You can flip through this while I read this letter that was given previously. My name is Kenneth Weichel, principal at, Kenneth Weichel Lansky Architecture. I'm a Lansky architect who's been practicing 23 years. I'm registered in Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, Illinois, and Kansas, and I sit on the advisory board of the Lansky Architecture Department at Michigan State University. Last year in 2012, our office was chosen as the Michigan chapter of, by the Michigan chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects' Firm of the Year. Also last year, we were lucky enough to be national winners from the American Society of Landscape Architects' General Design category for Detroit's Lafayette Greens Urban Garden, which is just south of the Weston Brook Cadillac downtown. This is an exciting time in the history of southeast Michigan. Our new regional transit authority has the potential to unify Oakland, Wayne, McComb, and Washtenaw counties and beyond. This includes thousands of businesses, industries, entrepreneurs, and more than 3 million Michigan citizens. Transit equals economy, and mobility equals independence. The backbone of the new transit system will include historic transportation corridors of Eight Mile Road that runs 31 miles from Lake St. Clair to Northville, through 14 communities, and Woodward Avenue, which runs 26 miles from the Detroit River to Pontiac, through 11 communities. At the intersection of these main transportation arteries is the former Michigan State Fairground property. Although there's a current proposal being considered for the Magic Plus Big Box Shopping Center at this important centralized location, the State Fairgrounds Coalition, which is the citizens group I mentioned earlier, feels this type of land use would completely underutilize this property's economic potential. The State Fairgrounds Coalition, or FSC, is a group of citizens, community associations, businesses, and nonprofits that held community meetings to create a list of land uses, economic possibilities, and lifestyle experiences for what the State Fairgrounds could become. Our design office was asked to work pro bono on for the FSC to provide the graphics to illustrate their vision. At the State Fairgrounds property, the FSC is proposing a much more strategic economic and intensive development, a regional transit, a transit-oriented development, TOD, as being promoted by Governor Schneider's Placemaking and My Place initiatives. Based on the economically successful national models of smart growth and complete streets, elements of this concept named Meta Expo for Michigan Energy Technology and Agriculture will include all the aspects of the Magic Plus plan presented, but much more. Instead of a shopping center layout, the Meta Plan is truly mixed-use TOD and regional multimodal transit center, including a more compact main street urban forum, livable and walkable complete streets, which include public transit, autos, bicycles, and pedestrian street life, and offers three-to-five-story buildings along these streets for a higher density of retail, commercial, institutional, and housing opportunities. Meta has exposition, hotel, and entertainment venues for year-round rollout showcase of Michigan businesses, universities, and entrepreneurialism at a global level, including transit and powertrain technologies, renewable energy technologies, green energy and blue water systems, and regional metropolitan agriculture. The Meta Concept offers four times the usable square footage as the Magic Plan, that means at least four times the return on investment dollars from the, than the shopping center, four times the construction jobs, four times the employment and career opportunities, and four times the tax base for the city and county. The State Fairgrounds is the most important piece of property, the State Fairgrounds is the most important piece of property is Detroit's real economic future. All the real estate think tanks and institutes are saying transit equals economy. In a real estate article by the Urban Land Institute in 2012, when asked what are the prospects of transit-oriented development in the next couple of years, Chris Lineberger stated, "The future of real estate is intimately intertwined with TOD and walkable urban development in general. What used to be a niche market is now the market. For at least the next generation, the bulk of real estate development will be higher-density walkable urban spaces, and much of it will be served by rail transit." This is a significant pent-up demand for walkable urban, ideally rail, transit-oriented development. In a good year, we had only 2%, we added only 2% of the built environment, so the pent-up demand will be here for another 30 years at least. Currently, SEMCOG is preparing the Woodward Avenue Rapid Transit Alternatives Analysis. This extensive analysis, alternatives analysis, is reviewing rapid transit options for the 27-mile corridor along Woodward from downtown Detroit to downtown Pontiac. The study area includes cities of Detroit, Highland Park, Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, et cetera, et cetera. Also, the Woodward Avenue Action Association received a sizable Federal Highway Administration grant to develop a complete streets master plan for the entire Woodward corridor. The WA3 is currently preparing this study. The State Fairgrounds Coalition believes that with the new regional transit authority, all other appropriate agencies, municipalities, businesses, and residents need to be involved in the discussion about this important piece of property for transit. The following groups should be included in this discussion: seated Detroit planning officials, SEMCOG, Detroit Works, and Detroit Future City Project, MDOT, Woodward Avenue Action Association, Restore Preservationists, Eight Mile Boulevard Association, cities of Ferndale, Royal Oak, Redford, Southfield, et cetera, transit-oriented development experts, the four counties, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So to briefly take you through the plan, the first plan that you see was the plan that was presented by the Magic Plus group that's being considered by the state. The Meta Expo concept shows, of course, that, reminds us that the State Fairground is right on these major corridors of Woodward and Eight Mile. It shows a concept plan for the Meta Expo, and again, this is the, this is the culmination of the visionary meetings by the public and the businesses of the State Fairgrounds Coalition. And it shows a transit, sort of transit map, showing the regional transit would be right on Eight Mile, and how it would be connected through the development to Woodward, and connecting the regional multimodal transit station and regional bus stations. It's a nice image of, a visioning image of what this kind of development could become, and it has some contact information at the end. Secondly, if we talk about the economics of a potential project like this, there's a handout right here, it was to a gentleman, Ken Till, the senior vice president of Reddico, and we were in discussions, they asked the State Fairgrounds group to come in and discuss their proposal versus what the State Fairgrounds Coalition is envisioning. And I was asked to put together some, some of the statistics of how we come to this more optimum, higher-density economic development, four and five times the return. So you can peruse through here, basically what we did was we took the square footages on the Magic Plan and the square footages on the Meta Concept, a downtown, small-town type of development that you're all familiar with, and we can see the returns are four and five times the returns on investment and jobs and taxes. Thirdly, there's a, this is a handout that's been going around, what is the future for the Michigan State Fairgrounds? This discusses old economies versus new economies as set forth by the governor. These are the associations that back the new economy and the placemaking initiatives, as you can see here, as set forth by Lansing. It shows what's considered the layout and the configuration of the power center or the shopping center compared to the new economy model. The old economy would be considered as Magic Plus Plan. And while it brings, it brings jobs and employment and investment, the new economy model, the higher density, the small-town feeling brings four and five times the amount, and it's also regional and globally competitive compared to the old model, which is a power center. So it shows quick-fix development, the comparison between, yes, a shopping center would bring immediate, immediate investment, but it doesn't have the long-term, it's the placemaking and community visioning, strategic economic development that the governor is promoting at this time, like the Meta Concept that the community group came up with. So you can peruse these documents. And then lastly, who pays for this type of development? Things like this are put together through public-private partnerships, the federal transit administration is behind developments like this, the Michigan Housing Authority, MISHTA, is behind developments like this. They're actually promoting other developments like this Meta Concept around the state, it's just they're not developed, they're not promoting it here at this location. So what the citizens group is requesting is, they have a, the state has the, their placemaking is called the My Place Initiative, and so what the, what the community is asking, that they want the My Place at our place. And then lastly, the, when we talk about transit, there are a few photos here of, this is a concept plan for what Los Angeles is doing as a regional transit hub. When we talk about a transit hub for this facility, we're not talking about a small station or a bus stop. It is a regional location. I mean, if you, if you go back to the, sort of the crosshairs document, and you see Woodward and Eight Mile with these 3 million people that could be affected by this type of transit opportunity, you see that this, this, the scale of this, like the scale of Chicago when you get off at O'Hare and get downtown, it's this type of facility that the community believes in at this property. And if there are any questions, there are a couple other documents in here possibly. I have a copy of the resolution by Ferndale, I think you may have already seen this and discussed it. And then there's also an earlier resolution by the WA3, which is the Woodward Avenue Action Association, that is, they're very keen on this transit-oriented development and placemaking and complete streets option also. Any questions?
No questions?
This is actually, this is, this is sort of a visioning package, this was a rendering by the, that comes from California, that they're considering for their regional transit hub. So you can see that it's not just, and when we talk about transit-oriented development, it's not just, it's billions and billions of dollars, like at Cleveland, they're enjoying eight, or six billion dollars through their new helpline that's centered around transit. And so it, transit is the basis for the development, it brings all these things together and makes all this opportunity happen. So these are just sort of some pictures about the scale of what the community, that this community group is asking the governor and asking municipalities to get behind to really support the transit opportunity for the region.
Is the lab still owned?
No, it's now owned by the state of Michigan.
Mr. Frazier? Could you explain, when you talk about transit, I know there's a rail service, can you tell me, in the plan, what does the plan meet the standards of getting people to the place and away from the place for the transit?
Right, well, this is a, this is a visioning package put together for the community, but, and I'm not a transit specialist, but the idea is, everything centers on these two crossroads. So if you're in, if you're in Novi and you want to get to Birmingham, the concept is, you jump on the Eight Mile Bus Rapid Transit, and you get to this multimodal transit station at the State Fair with coffee shops and residences, it's a whole little town, I mean, it's the size of downtown Royal Oak or the size of Birmingham. So that's the proposal. So you would, you would get from there to the State Fair and then upwardward. So, and that would be, that could be on Bus Rapid Transit, and it's also, the proposal could be local buses. It's like, it's the hub, center of the world for everything transit, which is very unusual because a lot of cities, you know, Chicago is more, is more like this off of the lake. You start downtown and you go out. at the State Fair with coffee shops and residences. It's a whole little town. I mean, it's the size of downtown Royal Oak or the size of Birmingham. So that's the proposal. So you would, you would get from there to the State Fair and then upwardward. So, and that would be, that could be on Bus Rapid Transit, and it's also, the proposal could be local buses. It's like, it's the hub, center of the world for everything transit, which is very unusual because a lot of cities, you know, Chicago is more, is more like this off of the lake. You start downtown and you go out, and you come back. And here, if you look at the diagram, you sort of go east-west along Eight Mile, which is a historically important corridor. It's already built for transit, it's got a great big green meeting in the middle of it, as does Woodward. So you take these two crosshairs, and everything sort of crosses and converges at the State Fair property. And so the reason that the citizens are very, very concerned and very excited about this is when you do a development of this type, one of these 15-year, you know, six, seven billion dollar developments, the biggest stumbling blocks are assembling all the parcels you need and buying them. Here, it's one piece that the state already owns. The citizens of the state already own this piece of property. So to streamline the process, to streamline the process and put a visioning package together like the Meta Concept Plan, a lot of the work can already be done, and it can be accelerated through it. And another thing that's pretty exciting about this whole transit coming together is, most other major cities in the country, successful cities that are taking jobs and industry and young people from us, have a transit plan or they're working on a transit plan. We could study what they've done well, what they've done wrong, and capitalize on that. So being the last to the party often gives you the best shot at the food.
Yeah, the sales reps are all gone.
Pardon me? Well, yeah. Right, right. But there's, there's, we were, we were in this, we were at a meeting, one of the alternatives analysis meetings, and there was a gentleman there from the Federal Transit Authority Administration, the FDA. And he mentioned that we had sent a package to him about this, this vision package, and he said, "It's a very interesting, very interesting concept," and he said that centering everything all together, everything up on Woodward, was very, very accessible. He says, "This type of a plan would take this development, this idea, way up the funding ladder because it taps into all at once, Bus Rapid Transit monies, local bus monies, regional train monies, complete streets monies, all these different things, instead of similar to what just happened in Dearborn where the federal government funded the 27 million train stop along the Amtrak in Dearborn that was completely funded by the, by the feds." So there are monies available, and so when people say, "Well, how are we going to pay for this?" It's, well, other communities in the country have put together schemes and worked with public-private profit partnerships and paid for by there are monies available, we just have to figure out how to use them.
I want to move to the line.
Thank you very much.
As well, so, you spell first?
Yeah. Thank you. Well, can you hear me? Thank you for letting me appear today and kind of provide our perspective from the Eight Mile Boulevard Association. We are the primary, probably the only advocacy group for exclusively dedicated to eight-mile roads. As you know, we cover a 27-mile stretch bordered. This gentleman formed the organization from I-94 to I-275, so we cover a 27-mile stretch, three counties, and 13 municipalities. We met with Ken Weichel and his group to discuss their plan, and fortunately, it was completed before we had a chance to have any input, so there were concerns that our organization had with regards to the proposal. But I think when it boiled down to, and I passed out this letter, we decided to support and have the state proceed with Magic Plus LLC, and there's several reasons for that. First of all, the plan that they submitted is conceptual. It was never intended to be a final site plan. So I wanted to make sure that that's clear here, that it was never meant to be final, that it is just a conceptual site plan that is in the development phase. If you're familiar with development, 166 acres at Eight Mile Woodward is not going to be developed in one year.
The Magic Plus?
Correct, correct. Yeah, the Magic Plus LLC. The Fairgrounds is 166-acre something. It is not going to be developed, 166 acres is not going to be developed in a year, it's not going to be developed in two years, it's probably going to be more like 10 years. And so I think that even if you submitted a site plan today, you are not going to develop that particular site plan. I just don't believe that. I've been around a while, I understand how development works, and that large of a parcel is just not going to happen. So we submitted a proposal for, like I said, a couple of reasons. We were housed at Fairgrounds, you may know, for a number of years, our offices, so we're intimately knowledgeable with Fairgrounds and its challenges. If you're familiar, if you've been around that area, the residential population to the east as well as to the south, there's probably a 10-to-1 ratio of vacant homes to occupied homes. It's a real little challenged area. So therefore, you know, we, we know and have seen no developers come forward except for Magic Plus LLC. Three RMPs the state has issued, only one proposal has come up with the funding, and that's Magic Plus LLC. So our board had an extensive discussion about this, and we decided to support proceeding. So I wanted to just briefly, I know your time is quick, so, like I said, I'm jumping around here. One of the things I wanted to mention is, if you're not familiar, Marvin Beatty is one of the investors in the Gateway Marketplace. If you've been by Eight Mile Woodward, you'll see that there's a 350,000-square-foot retail center that's being developed, and Marvin Beatty is also one of the partners with the Magic Plus LLC. And for me, I supported this because I thought it was extremely important that there be synergy between the two properties, because when it was owned by the state and it was owned by this property owner, they weren't getting along very well. So I was afraid there was going to be a 16-foot wall between the Fairgrounds and the Gateway Marketplace. Now we're going to have an integration. So that's really, to me, very exciting. I think that's important because they have a direct stake in both being successful. I think that's really important to know. I did want to lastly mention that the Meta Plan has been circulated for months, and I've been to several of these meetings where we've been together, and unfortunately, no funding sources come forward. No developers have come forward and said, "That's the plan I want to do." And unfortunately, I think at this time, we're reading in the headlines, Detroit's going through some tough times, and I think that to say, "Let's invest in a public-private partnership," and Detroit's going to bring money to the table, I just think it's unrealistic. And I think that the feds are investing in our transit on the light rail proposal and other projects. I just don't know that we're looking at something for several decades to happen at the Fairgrounds, and that would concern me when we have an investor today that wants to move forward. Lastly, I just wanted to say, I did contact Scott Woosley, who's the Director of MISHTA, before I attended this meeting. He is the negotiating with Magic Plus LLC on behalf of the State Land Bank. This proposal's done. If it isn't this Thursday, that they're proceeding, it will be next month. So I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but this is pretty far along the process. This RMP, they adhered, Magic Plus LLC adhered to all of the requirements the state issued, and I know that there's frustration that there's folks that don't believe the state did a good job, and regardless, Magic Plus LLC adhered to those requirements, and now we're at, you know, we're in the 11th hour. So I just wanted to make sure that you, you know, had our, we're asked to be here, I wanted to make sure that you saw our vantage point and why we sent us a support letter. We certainly want to see the highest of best use, and we have asked that they put a design suret as part of the terms of the agreement with Magic Plus LLC, with myself and our organization, as well as WA3 and local area residents to be part of that design suret. So I do believe we are going to get the highest of best use for that site, but it is going to take years for that site to be developed because some of the properties are in no bad shape, so.
Can you re- appreciate you being here. I've got a couple council people who might be the leaders. You're at the 1321 West Eight Mile Road, according to your letter. Mr. Moss?
Yeah. So, back to bringing it before our committee and our decision to bring it before the Council. I think there's a role that the city of Southfield can play here in trying to make sure that the proper development comes to this region on state-owned land, which all of us have a stake in. So, taking a letter that was presented from the city of Ferndale, it kind of stated that "We support your goals, we support everything you're trying to argue," without taking that further step and saying, you know, "We're going to be determining what the site plan is." I think that's the role that the city of Southfield could and should play in it. That we support the goals of public transit, that we support everything that's been presented to us as a council, and I agree, three things that they have mentioned in their letter from the city of Ferndale says that there is, you know, that these are suggestions that have been made. This letter is addressed to the Executive Director of the Michigan Land Bank Fast Track Authority. That number one, that there's a meeting with the consulting team working on both the Woodward Transit Alternative Analysis and Complete Streets Master Plans to discuss the recommendations currently underway and to ensure that these efforts are consistent with any future proposed site plans. Number two, that any sale of the property takes into consideration the recently passed Regional Transit Authority, and more specifically, the ongoing efforts to develop a viable transit-oriented development plan for the entire Woodward corridor and Southeast Michigan region, and we believe that site can play a vital role in the governor's efforts. And number three, that the design suret be incorporated into a final sale agreement ensuring that Detroit, Ferndale, and Woodward and Southfield, the Eight Mile Boulevard Association, Woodward Avenue Action Association, and all stakeholders have an opportunity for input. So I think that's pretty consistent to the goals, and at least gives us an opportunity to weigh on something that affects us regionally.
Ms. Seymour?
Yeah, thank you. One of the things that struck me at the time we had this discussion at our committee was the apparent intention of the Magic Plus LLC to develop big-box stores as opposed to a more walkable, pedestrian-friendly, retail mixed-use community. We don't need more big-box stores in a large area like that. I think it's a very bad use of the property, and that's my main concern. I mean, who owns it, and who's going to develop it, and who's got the money? Those are issues we really can't resolve here. But what goes there, I think we should have at least a voice in, and I think everyone in this area should. I support the regional transit consensus, but the big-box stores is what we don't need in this area. And to me, that's a very important use of that, of that property.
I would just add that this is a sensitive topic to us as we're trying to develop a city center in Southfield with greater density and higher use of the land that we have between this building and the lodge freeway. I also know that we have a lot of people every single day at our transit location at Eight Mile and Greenfields and on Northland, and the need for getting people to work that's reliable transportation. And just the whole thing, we can't keep widening freeways and building more roads that we can't keep up, so I'm very sensitive to this. And I really like what Mr. Moss is recommending, that we do take a position, and hopefully it's sort of a happy medium, a medium of, I really respect the work of the Eight Mile Boulevard Association, partner of the city of Southfield, and I don't want to pit one group against another.
That's not our, that's not our position either.
But I, I agree with these folks as far as, here's an opportunity with light rail coming out of existing rail line, that intersection we know is one of the most significant in the majority of Detroit. It's just the natural, and sir, I hope that we get a light rail down Eight Mile on it for lots of reasons. One, they'd know the draft, or wouldn't be drafted most, but at any rate, we need this kind of thing. The whole, the whole concept of coming from the far west to the center of the city is something that is, has merit. So where do we want to go from here?
So my suggestion is, or at least, you know, to bounce around, it seems that there's something that's moving quickly, possibly this Thursday. Procedurally, if you, if we could direct our city administrator, and it's an immediate need to act, to write a letter on behalf of our administration to express the concern that we would want to see a plan for state land that, you know, includes all the things that they've been advocating for, I would move immediately to act a little tentatively.
Okay.
I'll make that into motion.
Hello, come on.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, now let's bring in a motion, Mr. Moss.
I move to direct our city administrator to draft a letter on behalf of Southfield City Council and the city administration of the city of Southfield, to the Executive Director of the Michigan Land Bank Fast Track Authority, to express our desire to develop the State Fairgrounds with a vision for rapid transit, a vision for mixed-use, a vision for complete street initiatives, and everything that's discussed.
And walkability.
And walkability.
As opposed to just more big-box, or that one.
Yeah.
And I'll support that motion.
The move is supported. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All of us in favor signify by saying aye. Most in care is proposed? All right. I don't know if you have anything else you wanted to add.
No, I just wanted to add one other thing that we, as you know, the RTA installation went through, and Eight Mile was not included sadly. Corridors like Big Beaver with their two transit riders was included. So, and I go up and down Eight Mile Road and see dozens and dozens of people at each of our bus stops. So I just recently applied to be put on the Citizen and Judiciary Committee to make sure that we, Eight Mile has a voice, and Jordan from my office, Jordan Torri also was today at a SEMCOG meeting, so we are advocating very loudly. You know, we were the sole organization, though, at our TA hearing, you know, advocating for Eight Mile Road to be, if there are inclusion. So, you know, I would encourage, as we, this rolls out, I would encourage, and I will keep you informed of getting Eight Mile's inclusion because it is a major corridor, equally as important as Woodward, as we all know, but sometimes pales in attention. So we're in this quickie wheel, we'll continue to be Southfield.
Great. I can just speak in complete support of Tammy and Eight Mile. That is the regional transit plan. With all these studies going on and all this stuff going on, the fabric of Southeastern Michigan is based on those two backbones, the historic fabric. So when all these studies are done, hopefully, everybody will acknowledge that that is the transit plan, and that's what the community came up with. And that's the obvious plan, and we all sort of know it. It's just how do these things occur, and how are they linked together, and how can we maximize our money spent to get the optimum outcome and have, you know, traditional or transit-oriented development at the State Fair? It could be billions and billions of dollars for investment for the region. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have a lot on our agenda yet, so we're going to move to four. We have a couple people in the audience, so we're going to move to item four. This is the Miracle League of Michigan's proposed subcontracting of operations through Easter Seals effective July 1st, 2013 through September 22nd, 2033. And who is going to present this?
I will start, and we have with us Mr. Fred Worth of the Easter Seals President of Easter Seals of Southfield, Michigan, and Mr. Steve Peck, the Director of the Miracle League of Michigan. We are recommending council consideration of approving Easter Seals as the contract entity with the city of Southfield, taking the place of the Miracle League that's primarily contract, contractual. The reason for this is, there are several reasons. We, first of all, for the long-term, longer-term sustainability of the Miracle League. This is a very beneficial relationship to have the Easter Seals to step up. It's been established for 96 years since the city of Southfield. It ensures the longer-term sustainability of the Miracle League forward. The League's adapted baseball program, enhances the therapeutic recreational opportunities available to our special needs residents in the city of Southfield. Thirdly, the building, what this, this arrangement is approved at the next regular meeting, we'll bring it back, it's formal consideration approval. This will enable the Easter Seals organization to begin fundraising for a proposed installation of three restrooms near the former childcare facility adjacent to the tennis courts and to the Miracle League field. This would serve the needs of both the Miracle League and the needs of the city of Southfield. We have, in addition to the tennis courts, sand volleyball, Miracle League, family outings, very heavily, heavily used portion of the municipal complex, which would benefit from the additional, the addition of three restrooms. The current, the plumbing is already in for these, established, it was established when the Miracle League field was, was first introduced and instructed in the city of Southfield. On June 28th, the council finance committee met and conducted a, a meeting at the site of the Miracle League field where the restrooms would also be installed. And I would suggest that possibly a comment on this from our finance committee chair on accounting their desk may be in order at this point. And then we do have Parks and Recreation as well as Miracle League and Easter Seals on purpose of answering questions, if you may do.
Mr. Chairman, I might add that council members did meet at the site and with the Easter Seals as well as a present operator of the Miracle Field. And we were just, I personally was very pleased that this is taking place. We went innings over before the rain out, if you remember. By that, I mean that we met under the roof for a while, then we went outside and looked at the site and said, "40." So similar with Brent. But the comments were made, and I totally agree with what is being done and the recommendation and the letters that was in our agenda.
Ms. Mark? I just wanted, you know, Jim really covered the, you know, the bones of this project. But about 11 or 12 years ago, our former director, Bill Waterhouse, brought us a video to our staff meeting on the first Miracle Field. And really, there was not a dry eye in the house. And he was, he was in full support of this project. It went quickly through council, and the construction also went very quickly. What Steve is doing over there at that field is just amazing. These adapted kids who have a lot of challenges in life are meant, you know, when they get on that field, they feel like, like baseball stars. I mean, Steve really makes, you know, each player feel special. Parkson Rec is in full support of what he does over there. We're really happy to have them on this campus. The field is beautiful, and we look forward to, you know, expanding this. The new building, you know, is a huge plus, you know, for our facilities up there. The tennis courts in that area are played, you know, until almost midnight, and really the rest of our building are closed at that time. So we could really use those restrooms later on in the evening. And, you know, I'd like to turn it over to Steve to tell your story.
Well, you know, I appreciate you giving me credit. You know, I'm off the program, but none of this would have happened without the city council. I can remind you that 10 years ago, we were the fourth Miracle League in the country. 10 years ago, people around the country didn't know what a Miracle League was. So when I brought it to you, there were only two in the original state of Georgia, one in Myrtle Beach. And so I come to you, and I stood before you, and I talked about this rubberized baseball field. And I showed you the video that was done on HBO Sports. And so you may thank me, but I thank you, as would our parents, because you were one of the first to have the insight of what this Miracle League concept was long before anyone else. And today, since that decision by you, 125 other municipalities around the country have made the decision to say yes to Miracle League baseball. It's a baseball program, yes, for children with physical and mental disabilities. But I know it, and those of you who've been out to the field, and most of you have, know it to be far more than that. I, I can tell you that it's a community that we built here in Southfield. And the people in Southfield who have a child with a disability are very fortunate to have it in their backyard. But I can also tell you that it touches far more than the players that participate. It touches the volunteers because, remember, and there are, since our 10 years, we've put through 3,000, over 3,000 players now in those 10 years. So it's beyond the players, all of those thousands. Every one of them has to have an able-bodied volunteer help them. And where do they come from? They come from local baseball teams, softball teams, cheer groups, companies, send their employees out with their executives to volunteer. And so this is not just the citizens of the city of Southfield that are fortunate to have it in their backyard. It's people that come from all over. And I can tell you from meeting with them, the company owners, the employees, when they come out to this municipal complex, the word I hear over and over is, "Wow." I mean, they are impressed with what this site has to offer. And so, again, I'm proud of this city council. It's not about me. It's about what we've all done. And as you know, in all that we do and all the decisions we make day to day, how many of them can we say have changed a life? I mean, we have changed thousands of lives. I mean, I've been at far too many funerals of children that have played in our league. And I can remember the first one, when they have the videos that play of their child. And how many videos and pictures were of the Miracle League? And how many families have told me from that point what this means to them? What it means for our children and our families and our community to volunteer? So.
Thank you, Mr. Pector. I didn't get your business address for the record either. I'm sorry.
27,000 Franklin Road, Southfield, Michigan.
Thank you. And I mentioned, Ms. Seymour, we have one more person to speak, correct, from Easter Seals?
Sure.
Name and business address for the record. And then Ms. Seymour, for your...
Brent Worth, 2399 East Walton, Auburn Hills, Michigan, 40326. So I'm the president and CEO of Easter Seals Michigan. As you know, we have a presence, we've had a presence in Southfield for a very long time. So we have two sites in Southfield, and in fact, our largest presence is here in Southfield. So when Steve approached us about partnering with the Miracle League, you know, I came out to the Miracle League and had the opportunity to witness the Miracle League miracle in itself. And so I have to admit, Steve goes, "Well, Brent, what did you think?" And I said, "You know, Steve, it's amazing." And he says, "Brent, you know, you work with people with disabilities every single day." And I said, "You know, I don't get to see them have fun like this, and I don't get to see them have fun with their family." And the community actually comes in and has fun with them. So actually, what Steve had talked about were the 800 volunteers that actually come in to partner with these kids every single game. So the community inclusion, the stigma that this breaks down, it is, it goes, it is so much more than baseball. And in fact, I had a, I was doing an interview with Steve Suggs the other day, because we're doing a 10th anniversary thing. And I said, "You know, this really made me fond of baseball all over again, and it has nothing to do with baseball." You know, and it's really powerful. But thinking about Easter Seals and thinking about our history, our mission is to serve and support people with disabilities and their families so that they can live, learn, work, and play in their communities. And this is such a big part of play that, and it is so powerful, that it was an easy way for us to partner with Steve to support this, so that this can live on long past all of us that are living here today, so that this can live on to support more people and that we can even grow it for more kids to support. So I thank you all for taking this opportunity to present to you and to live on and just grow this public-private partnership with the city of Southfield.
And real quick before I forget, the 27th on a Saturday, 11:00 AM, is when we're officially celebrating our 10th anniversary. And we intend on honoring all of the city council members. We'd love you all to be there. We'll be mentioning you by name. So it's 11:00 AM on Saturday, 27. And then in August, the 17th, Miguel Cabrera and some of the Tigers will be back out for the third year in a row to put on a camp for our kids. So you're more than welcome to come out for that, too.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Ms. Seymour, next.
I just want to say, I think this is a wonderful partnership and such a natural. But as a member of the finance committee, the entire finance committee approved this agreement. So I just want to make that a matter of record.
Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment. I went to a Miracle League game last year, and I definitely, you know, speak a fraction of the great thing that you said about the organization and about the games that are played out there. One thing that's noteworthy is that, obviously, mental challenges and physical challenges don't discriminate. You have, you have children from, they don't discriminate on community borders. You have children from all over the metro region utilizing the Southfield facility and really getting a good taste of what the city has to offer. So that's why I think that this is an incredible partnership. We allow the city to shine, and we allow them to be shining in the city. So I think the proposal before us is something that's worth supporting.
I'm going to go around and ask for consensus to move this to the consent agenda on July 29th. Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. We'll, this will be part of our official agenda on July 29th. Thank you. Look forward to seeing you on the 27th. Good to get in.
Thank you all here today.
All right. Stand your voice up. You guys to be up there? We are...
I didn't recognize you. All right, let you go over here.
All right. So we're going to go back to item three on our agenda, and this is the update on security accessibility and operational improvements to the police department building. And Mr. Schret, you're going to kick it off, and then Chief Hawkins?
Yes, we have Chief Hawkins. We also have our friend for technical assistance.
Gentlemen, if you'd like a seat on the front table there.
We have a project that we began, it was approved on March 18th, and it involves, of course, the security and operational improvements as well as efficiency service in the police building. We are well on our way on this project. However, we run across a few challenges, shall we say. So some duct work, duct work to nowhere, some code requirement upgrades, some mechanical systems that are underpowered for the new configuration. And basically, this, this relates to the fact that the building has had a number of reconfigurations in its history. And the first estimates were done basically by a combination of internal and the police personnel as well as without heavy architectural input. Now that we've got all the numbers and we've run across a few opportunities, the challenge, the project cost is now of $380,000. We were at 223, 223,496. These funds are from the insurance risk retention fund, which are, as was explained in the council president's update email, which are basically the results of the experience you've had over the years. We're three funds from our insurance program, which we set aside for risk management initiatives. This is a risk management initiative. And I would also like to add that this project will continue to be under the super-tenant control of the building authority. So this amount we're asking for has a contingency built in it, and we will come in and add budget or below by 200, probably, if we want. But we don't want to come back again. We've experienced all of our opportunities. We've looked eyeing all for any other surprises, and we're not anticipating any more. That's our story. We'll be coming back with the details at the next renovation, the formal approval with the customer, the budget for this particular building authority project.
We, I mentioned in the email, too, that some of the things about improper, or the need for proper ventilation when you're moving walls and so on. And also, not figured in the handicap counters to meet ADA compliance. I don't know, Chief or Mr. Brandon, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Good evening, councilman, members of the community. I think Mr. Schret covered it pretty well. The officers made a good faith effort with assistance from others with the first estimate, and it came in, you know, they underestimated the cost of the renovations. And we've got some expert technical assistance with us now, and we're confident that the estimate is accurate and we're ready to go forward.
Yes, which...
The problem with the shooting range, is that all settled now?
Yes, we, yes, those problems have been corrected. And our shooting range is operable, and our officers, they're writing down after we're training on that shooting range.
All right. Then I think...
You know, when we, when you talk about the ADA requirements, does that mean, is that anything being spent to get people in the building? Only, I mean, I know the counter was not very friendly to handicap folks because it was so high. But is there anything done as far as the ADA requirements to get people in the building? It just seems like if you're in a wheelchair or if you have crutches or anything, you have to go way down to the other end to come up the ramp, to come all the way across the deck in order to get in the police truck door.
That is, that is correct. There is nothing in this particular project that is dealing with getting the people inside the building. That is something that we should be looking at probably in the near future. However, it's a very large expense. There is a way to get there, though. It's just not correct.
Oh, yeah. Way out of the way.
Yeah, it's way out of the way, plus I'm not really fond of taking a wheelchair across the distance in papers either.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other question or discussion then? Go around the room. You're finally moving this forward for the 29th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. All right. We are now on to, moving on to, by the way, with the record that Mr. Land left at 6:15, we're now moving on to item five.
I'll start this, and then, of course, we have Chief Rowley here to assist on this detail. On the 25th of February, council authorized the sub-odd bid for, for replacement by sport vehicles. At that time, the estimated cost was $700,000. One of the things that we will reach when we look at in detail the numbers is, we actually for the, for the vehicles themselves, we came in at $636,000, so we came in under the vehicle itself. The justification for replacing the vehicles is in terms of the mileage, which and use that vehicles have. Seven years and 200,000 miles per vehicle at the time of replacement. It's thought to be a reasonable time for these vehicles to be replaced in terms of service to the public as well as maintenance costs and as well as traded value or value as backup units for the, for the fire department equipment array. Additionally, during the work that we did on the bids, I did some research, and I asked the fire chief to see if there were any improvements in stretcher systems that were possible because we have had a number of lifting claims over the last five years. And our goal, of course, for all of our emergency personnel is for them to return home safely. And so every injury to us is, is something we look at to be avoided. And so every injury to us is something we look at to be avoided and to certainly go on to recur. We did note that in five years, we had 19 injuries, and the total value expended just on the medical and other related expenses actually exceeds the cost of a system called the Stryker Power Stretcher System. We have experts here. Besides Chief Rowley, we have representatives from Stryker. We also have our fire department personnel that handle the EMT functions. And we all agree that this is something that we ought to be within the bid. So we put it in the bid as an option, so that if council determines, you know, that not right now, then we could be backed out of the bid, and we strongly recommend this as a matter of cost and safety to our people, that the Stryker Power Stretchers and lifting systems be included within this bid. The low bid then, total for everything, comes to $851,000. We back out $8,000 in trade-in from the existing stretcher systems, as well as $60,750 for the existing units. So our trade-ins value will be $68,750. And the cost within the $851,000 is $146,446 for the stretcher system. So if we back out the stretchers and the trade-in, the price for the units themselves net comes to $636,000 when $700,000 was provided as an estimate back in February. What we would like to do is have a demonstration, I believe, of the power system.
Can I just mention, before you do your demonstration, that for council, if the trade-in value seems low to you, it's because it is not the current vehicles that are being retired, it's the older vehicles that are there.
It's our present backup fleet through the council, Mr. President. Good evening, council, Mr. Schreit, Madam Clerk, and residents. I have with me this evening Captain Columbo, he's our emergency coordinator, and Captain Scheich, he's our training officer and safety officer for the department, and he's also instrumental in putting the specs together. And I have, from the manufacturer of Stryker, I have Dan Fulmer. He's going to do a demonstration on our stretcher systems shortly for us. I want to thank you. We understand this is a large request, but it's a very important request, and we don't take it lightly. We have put it off for quite a while, trying to extend the life of our vehicles through extensive maintenance programs, and we feel now is the optimal time. These vehicles that are in our present fleet have to be moved into a reserve capacity so we can get more use out of them. And that's, the vehicles that we're going to be trading in are the ones that are in our backup fleet now. They're very old and not very reliable, and they're coming unsecure. So those will be moved on, the present vehicles will be moved into our backup. And what we can do with that is extend them another five or seven years. Our frontline fleet averages about 30,000 miles a year per vehicle. These, when they're in the backup capacity, they average about 4,000 miles per year. So that way, we get even more use and more paying for our buck, so to speak, out of the vehicles. And if we don't do it at the optimal time, they don't have any backup value, and we end up not having a safe enough backup fleet, and we have to buy more frontline vehicles to, we always have to have a backup, a redundancy in this type of operation. Just a couple of thoughts. To meet the mission of the fire department effectively, the fire service must have dependable and efficient apparatus. As fire service administrators, we must be prepared to replace outmoded fire equipment on a timely basis. We realize that economic pressures exist at all levels of government, and the decision to allocate funding for the replacement of fire apparatus must be supported by sound need cost analysis. Age by itself should not be the sole criterion for deciding to replace fire apparatus. These vehicles' routine workload, physical condition, and degree of preventative maintenance it receives are usually more accurate indicators of whether the apparatus are reliable for frontline duty. These vehicles, as Mr. Schreit mentioned, by the time, there's a certain lead time to have these vehicles built, and our present fleet will be approaching 200,000 miles. So we have gotten quite a bit of use out of them. As vehicles, any type of vehicle, not just emergency vehicles, as they get older, the safety for the occupants diminishes, and we take that very seriously in the emergency field. There's also diminished ride quality for our patients in older vehicles. And if you have ever had a bad problem or you're on a stretcher, it's not very comfortable to be on it anyways, but if you're in a vehicle that has shocks that are worn out or disc systems that are worn out, no matter how many times you replace them, it's still not like a new vehicle. And as Mr. Schreit said, these vehicles have been in service almost seven years. Duty cycle, as I said, for frontline is, we use our vehicles, we're the busiest department in Oakland County, and we use them on a regular basis, and they get driven hard. And when I say miles isn't the only criterion, Station Four is farther from the hospital and probably has more miles, but that vehicle might be in actual better shape than Station One that has lower miles, but it gets, it has more runs and harder use, stopping, starting, startups, more and more startups. So we have to assess all of these when we're looking at whether that's a replacement vehicle. The stretcher system that we're going to introduce is state-of-the-art. When I first saw it, and Mrs. Schreit had brought it to my attention, and we explored it, I knew this is something that we really, really needed here. LIT mentioned about obesity, and we are seeing larger patients in our community. Childhood obesity is occurring, it increased costs to the community in the long run, and those carry over into adulthood. And as that carries into adulthood, we have more patients, and our workload grows up. And we have to be able to accommodate those patients. We have to have equipment that will handle five, six, 700-pound patients, which we do have quite regularly. This system will accommodate a 700-pound patient. It takes the workload off of the paramedic from having to lift the stretcher up and hold it while the one paramedic lifts the wheels and moves it into the ambulance. It's all done automatically, and it's all, I'll let the Stryker manufacturer demonstrate it. It's quite remarkable what they've developed and the stress that'll take off of our personnel and increase safety for our patients and increase safety for our personnel. We have a, he has a short PowerPoint. If you wanted to take a small break and walk out to his truck, he could do a demonstration right outside the door that gives you a real, hands-on visual that will take about five minutes. So either way, we can do it. I'm sure the Stryker representative will accommodate us. So however you'd like to do it--
Why don't we just have the stretcher demonstration?
Okay. There's the system that's built into the truck, he'll have to describe to you, or he has a short video that we can put on. That's actually mounted in the truck, and it'll go along with the stretcher. So this is Dan from Stryker, and I'll turn it over to Dan.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for having me at the meeting. My name's Dan. I'm from Stryker Medical. We're based in Cal State Michigan.
I need you to give your business address for the record.
Our business address is 3800 East Center Avenue, Portage, Michigan.
Okay, and your last name, Dan?
Fulmer, F-U-L-M-E-R.
All right, thank you.
I have a couple of hard copy brochures of the actual power load system. I'll kind of give you an idea on what I have out in my vehicle van. I have here our newest version of an ambulance cot that we call the Power Pro. The Power Pro cot is meant to be used, it really eliminates any strain or risk of injury that a paramedic would have to endure when lifting or lowering a patient on a cot. So instead of sheer physical force, hydraulic powered motors lift and lower up to a 700-pound patient. So when we think about an ambulance cot in this position, where a manual cot, somebody physically have to bend and lift, with a Power Pro, we can push a button and it automatically lifts that up. So what makes this cot the newest version of the Power Pro is its ability to really adapt to the patient. So today, we're trying to fit larger patients onto a standard-sized cot. And we have a standard-sized cot, so that we can still fit through 30-inch door frames and we can fit into smaller areas. But it's always been an issue where patients are a little bit wider than the actual cot. So we needed more surface area. So we added a system we call XPS. It stands for an expandable patient surface. And this is really to accommodate those patients, really from that 300 to 700-pound mark. And it's those patients that really bring the most risk to our paramedics and to our firefighters. So with an XPS system, we have more cot underneath the patient, making it easier for a paramedic to do their jobs. So a Power Pro cot with XPS in use in tandem with a power load system really provides the best case scenario for any paramedic. Where today, loading and unloading a cot from an ambulance, it's still operators holding and supporting up to that 700-pound patient weight, where typically, a two-person paramedic crew, if they needed help lifting and loading that patient into an ambulance, they would have to call for what's called a lift assist, which means taking firefighters and paramedics off of the road who aren't available to go on another call because they have to attend, literally, just to help lift and load a patient. That's really what the power load addresses. The--
And I'll do a side note on that. Many times, we have to, right now, we have to send our engine along with our life support vehicle to the hospital to help unload the patient. With this new system, the engine could stay in service, and the two paramedics would be able to unload a large patient all by themselves.
Chief, I could see how that would be great, but to actually get the patient into the life support unit, does that help within a home, let's say, rescue someone?
Well, the stretcher will accommodate a larger patient, which helps. Our other stretchers didn't accommodate this large of a patient because they didn't have the wings up and downstairs.
You know, what if, I think what you're asking is, it's a 700-pound, 600-pound person, and they collapse, they're on the floor.
That still takes a lot of manpower. That always will take a lot of manpower, and there's no, we have lifting systems, we have bags that we inflate and help lift the patient up to the level of the stretcher. And I can let Captain Columbo talk a little bit about that. But it still is manpower-intensive to get a son of 700-pound patient off the floor. We have special--
How do you get him downstairs?
With a lot of muscle right now. And we have stair chairs. We have a stair chair that we can use if the stair chair accommodates the patient. I can have Captain Columbo explain this.
Is that part of the system?
We already have stairs.
Yeah, we have stairs.
And they don't, they're in the chair, so that's a picture. Kind of like a client-style kind of-- All right, so this takes care of, because this, the information I have on our claims, our lifting--
Yes.
But not all lifting is, you know--
Not, yes, not all lifting is done right at the back of the ambulance. Much of the lifting is also done in the dwelling or the office building.
That these, this equipment, I mean, looking at what counts versus our people, but we're always looking at economics. So it seems to me that when you count everything, these units probably pay for themselves less than five years.
Oh, absolutely. I would--
For the last five years.
Yes. And it's much safer for the patient--
Do you know the last life of the unit, seven years?
Yes, it is the last life of the unit, absolutely.
Yeah, one other system that we have that you mentioned, it's a Mangar airlift bag system, which we've had for many years, and this will deflate completely flat, like a plastic cart, and then you can just get the patient on there, there's a little compressor that air, the airbag--
We were the first to get those.
And we were--
Yeah, we were.
Just reminding you that we have those. If you get them from the floor to the cot, that's what we would use. Downstairs, so it's a combination of systems that we have to have for all different scenarios we're running with, either the stair chair, the lift bag, and then with this, we pretty much got it covered. Now, one side note, I do, and the power load system, the nice thing that it does for our firefighters and paramedics is that it supports cot and patient weight during that loading and unloading process, which today, we're relying on a physical human being to make sure and monitor that entire process. It's now done by a system. The imperative thing that the system does for you is when the cot is loaded into the ambulance and fastened inside the ambulance, we lock the stretcher in a way that lets us pass a 20G front impact and a 10G every other direction crash test, and that cot cannot come out of the fastener. So to put things in perspective, if an ambulance is keebo, if an ambulance is struck in the right way, or a catastrophic accident occurs, there is a chance for a cot, an ambulance stretcher, to come loose in the back of an ambulance. So depending on the situation, when that ambulance cot comes loose, it becomes a missile in the back of an ambulance, and it's going to do damage to whatever it hits. What a power load system does is it gives you the ability to make sure that anybody in the back of that ambulance is in the safest cot fastener in the world, and it will pass that 20G, 10G, and 10G crash test, and it will not come loose.
And those are higher standards than are set in America presently. They're set in Canada, I believe, and Australia. And they meet those standards.
Yeah, let's say the electronic portion of going up and down malfunction. Is there a manual way to lift it up and down, or you have to lift up the whole thing?
No, there are, on the Power Cot itself and the load system, there are manual backups in case of any catastrophic failure. So the cot and load system talk to each other when they're in operation, but if the cot loses power, there is a backup way to tell the load system to lift and load. Or if the load system loses power, you still have the ability to load the cot. Or if both systems fail and there is a power failure, you are never left without the capability of finishing your ambulance call.
Anyone else have questions?
No, I have no question on this, but I do have some questions here to do some information on open house.
Okay. Anything else on the power lift? This is rather pricey, but as Mr. Schreit points out, we exceeded in insurance liability the amount of the stretchers. Nothing else, then, thank you, Dan. And we'll go back to Mr. Percassi's questions on the unit.
The various private ambulances that have emergency vehicles, how do we, how do our specs differ, if they do differ, from what we have? And I guess our department would have to answer that. In other words, when our specs come out, and does it, do our specs make our cost go up? Is what I'm really wondering, because I've gone to a lot of conferences, and they have these expo areas, I've seen the emergency vehicles that they have on display for private, and those are being used extensively, according to what I've heard and listened to and seen, and watched their presentation. How do ours differ? Because there is a difference in cost between the two, and I guess I'm wondering, why is it that much more?
The current trucks that we have are medium duties. When we started transporting, we went to a truck to last a stronger. When we had the lighter trucks, which are similar to what some private ambulances use, we were only, we were replacing them every four years. These trucks, we paid a little more for them, the last batch, and the current bid is based on our last trucks. We've got seven years on them. So we've extended the life on them quite a bit. We also have to be able to fill these up for firefighting. So we have to have firefighting equipment and tools that we carry in the compartments because they serve a dual purpose, not only as an ambulance and a rescue, but also for all of our firefighting equipment that we carry to do dual duty.
How many units total in this do we have, from backup and frontline?
Frontline, we currently have four frontline vehicles, one at each of the outlying stations. We have two backups that are our main backup. We have two backups that are our main backup. In other words, we use them to trade out for getting maintenance done and repairs. And then we have another truck that we run as a squad. So we currently have three available to utilize as backup rigs. And sometimes, we're on that third rig.
How many total runs do you, do you remember how many you have per month?
Well, we have, our total runs, which last year were twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, yeah.
Ten thousand five hundred EMS.
It's a pretty year, right?
That was...
That was actually...
Pretty steady.
This year may be up a little bit. Our run numbers for January, February were the highest that we've had in our history. So this year may be up a little bit. We're still trying to account for the reason. But age of the community, maybe growth in the economy, maybe more people coming in and out of the community, we're not sure yet, but we're still looking at that.
Out of that, out of that ten thousand five hundred runs, just over six thousand were actual transports, where we actually went to the hospital. We don't always end up going to the hospital on every single emergency call.
And Tom, if I'm not mistaken, from the onset of transport, we've been able to bring in about fourteen million dollars in revenues, is that correct, with this program, the transporting program?
That's all, Mr. Percassi. Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for the chief?
I have a couple of things. These new vehicles have some extra safety features built into them that are required by NFA. Five-point harnesses. They also have, in the past, and I can't tell you how many times this would happen to me, I'd be doing CPR, trying to do CPR, and told myself, because there weren't harnesses that were designed to hold us while we're standing up as the vehicle's going down the road. And if a vehicle turned that way, my head would hit the cabinet that way and I'm still trying... So now, there's harnesses that actually allow us to, if there's a sudden stop, will pull us back into the seat. And the attendant seat has an actual five-point harness, so it's much safer for the attendants and the paramedics. The safety also comes with the added crash, our forces, yeah, the forces that are, from the crash, so the patients are in a better position and our paramedics are in a better position with this whole system.
Okay. This item is slated to go on the twenty ninth. So I need a, if we're prepared to support this on the twenty ninth, Mr. Seymour? It's on the consensus agenda for the twenty ninth. I'll pause.
Mr. Sharet? We're trying to have one more question.
Sure.
We have four that are going to be traded in. So we have one frontline and three backups?
That's correct. Our two present backups, which are quite old now, that squad that Captain Scheich mentioned, which is a nineteen ninety-five, and then one of our, we'll assess, four in, four out.
Four in, four out.
I'm trying to get the difference between the backup and the four that are in use. I mean, are they, is the backup the same as one of the frontline and in use?
The, no.
Or a year, or?
The frontline now...
Why aren't you just, why aren't you just getting three, which would make your backup or?
We have four frontline vehicles now. They're all going to be, they're all going to be, one's going to be sold right out, the worst one. The other three will be moved into a support. But we have four vehicles that are going out. Four, we're buying four new vehicles, four of our present fleet are going to be leaving.
You know, what I'm saying is you have, you have two backup and one, and one that is, I guess, a backup to the two backup, or?
Well, we call it a squad.
Okay.
It is a man vehicle.
But I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is that if, if the four that are being used presently as frontline, are they the same in miles? I mean, we, you compare which ones you're going to trade in and get rid of. Are the four that are outlying the same, are same year, or, how do you rate, how do you rate the ones, in other words, you're going to get rid of? Because you're putting two in a backup and one in a way back.
That's a good question.
Well, they're the exact, well, they're the exact, they were bought the same time, they're the same year, all the exact same features. It's just that due to their location in the city, the one, they tend to get different miles on them because they have different, further to go to the hospital.
So the one that is one of the four is used more than the other three?
It has more miles on it.
So in other words, it has more miles on that?
That's correct.
So you're doing one with the most miles and two backup and one with the other backup. Is that correct?
For the most part. We're going, we're going to look at...
Three of the frontline we're keeping.
Okay.
And deleting the one that has either the most miles or is in the worst mechanical gear.
We will look, we will do a whole assessment on all of the vehicles and make sure that mechanically, we're keeping the three best vehicles. And we'll do that with our mechanics division. We'll look at the miles, we'll have them, we'll have them tested. It won't be as simple as just looking at the odometer.
Thank you very much. Yes, okay. All right, Mr. Mo?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
And I say yes, okay.
Thank you.
We'll take this up on the corner of July.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And thank you from...
No, I think there's just running behind my head.
You're not going anywhere.
No, I'm not going anywhere. I'm just getting a new file.
All right, we are moving on to item today.
You don't stand?
Yeah, we have another item.
I'll start on this one, tonight's fire department night. I'll start on this one, we have the experts here to assess. We have a situation where the now former backup emergency medical transport service provider was in breach of contract while failing to provide proper insurance protection in favor of the state. That being the case, and having contacted the company to attempt to remedy the situation, we received permission from council to go out for proposals for backup emergency medical transport service. I'm pleased to present two excellent companies. One is primary and another is secondary. The Star EMS, in providing these services, will, A, provide a thirteen percent lower cost than the secondary provided to those residents who must absorb the cost of ambulance services. And secondly, and most importantly to us, and staff really became a unified role and record on this, is that we want a unit within the boundaries of the city of Southfield on a twenty-four hour, seven day a week basis, and we want that contractual obligation. Star has committed to providing two EMS vehicles within the boundaries of Southfield on a twenty-four hour, seven days a week basis for the duration of the contract years. We strongly recommend this arrangement. Star is primary and Alliance will help the secondary providers for emergency backup services. For, back to July fifteenth, period of three years with two, two-year extension options. And of course, contracts will be reviewed by our city attorney's office. And we will bring this forward for formal consideration and approval on the twenty ninth.
Chief, we discussed last Thursday, the very issue about the coverage in Southfield, although they're located in Pontiac, and it's at no cost to us, correct?
That's correct. At no cost.
To have those vehicles here.
Yes. And they sent us a written statement to that effect, signed by their president of that company.
Wonderful. Mr. Percassi?
Yes, sir. Mr. Sharet, when we had a situation where we had, say, a first call and a backup, we had a little problem with it. I'm wondering, how do you make sure that they don't get in the same situation than we had in the other situation?
I require, under contract, that our requirement was one vehicle, we're getting two, that's better. That the vehicle is within the boundaries of the city of Southfield on a twenty-four hour, seven day a week basis. We did not have that guaranteed previously. The, and so that caused a delay situation. And we considered it was not the kind of result that we wanted going forward.
Well, if Star then, Star EMS, is that the one that would be called first as a backup?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and we're sure that Alliance would respond as quick as if they were called first?
Yes. The likelihood of them needing to be called is rather remote, actually.
No, I understand that. I just don't want us to get in a situation where, you know, he called me first, I called him first. I don't want, I didn't get a call or, I just...
We have discussed that with both parties through the chair.
I got fed up on another situation where I didn't want to go with one and say, listen, I'm going to throw all the work on you, you're going to be accountable, if you don't do it, you're gone. You know, no excuses. It's too serious of a situation that we have with our EMS to get into, a, getting a reputation that we're not doing the job properly. And I have such faith in our EMS, that the other was better to keep up the same standard that they receive when our fire department took it.
Through the chair, I agree. And we will, we have had numerous discussions. And actually, one part of the contract is that we require our providers to have a backup themselves. And Alliance is on the backup list for, for Star Ambulance.
Okay. Mr. Fraser and Mr. Mo?
Yes, Star is from Pontiac. Where is Alliance from?
Troy.
Troy?
Troy.
In our discussions with Star, did they ask to have a certain amount of runs in order to guarantee that they have two units within the city of Southfield on a twenty-four, seven basis? Because that's a cost to them that they're going to have to absorb if they don't get any runs.
No, they did not ask to have any guarantees whatsoever. They understand that. Phil Grubb is the president, he's been in this industry for probably almost forty years. He understands how this industry works. There is also a benefit to being down in Southfield. They will be, any community that provides any kind of service to the city of Southfield is looked at highly because we scrutinize very heavily, well, anybody that provides service to us. They will build business down here in other forms, transfers from hospitals, transfers from nursing homes, not necessarily with those companies that they're using to back us up, but they will be able to start to develop business down here. That's kind of how some of that was explained to me, as it would be with Alliance, because Alliance isn't presently operating all the time in Southfield. Although, they do come through Southfield on their way to Providence Hospital, I've seen both Star and, and... And remember, Star's, their main office is out of Pontiac, but they, their rigs don't respond from there. They go out in the community. They have rotating shifts, they overlap, they will not leave Southfield to go up and change shifts. There will always be a vehicle right here. My question was, if they get called to another run, how will you work that? And they're already servicing Fingham Farms, they service one of our, two of our mutual aid partners right now, Waterford and Bluefield Township. Those are firefighting mutual aid companies, and they service those communities. And what they will do is, as one of their rigs gets utilized in Southfield, they'll just rotate another rig right into Southfield. So they always have two available, and they may have one operating and then two available. So they'll have, they have beefed up their workforce already to accommodate our needs.
Okay, I agree with Councilman Percassi on the standards that we've, we've set for ourselves and are living up to, and that anyone that we contact with really needs to have those same kind of standards. And it will be, I would think, if they're under, under game, that Star would be okay. But if we, if the two Star units are busy and we have to go for Alliance backups, can they get to Southfield in five minutes?
Well, what they'll do is if their, if their rigs are tied up and they don't have anybody, they're going to call, they're going to call Alliance right away and have a rig moved our way. They'll just, they'll always be on a rotating basis. If their two rigs are tied up and they don't have anybody, if they're on vacation, they know that, we've discussed it, to call Star and have a rig move back to Southfield.
Okay, so it's their responsibility, not our responsibility, to say that we dispatch two of their?
At the present time, that's the way it's set up. We are looking at, at taking that over. We were having discussions with our dispatch center, but at the present time, that's the way it, it has always been, and that's the way it's set up presently.
Because I, I agree wholly with the situation that we had in the past, that, you know, one of our backups didn't perform to our specifications and didn't work out just right.
I've made it very clear that communication is going to be of the utmost importance. And I will tolerate...
As will monitoring.
As will monitoring, yes. And we will, which we haven't had in the past, on a quarterly basis, have meetings and go over pros and cons, what's working with, and we will continually strive to make improvements.
Okay, now, will, will Star and ultimately, if needed, Alliance handle primarily the north end of Southfield, or?
They will handle, they'll be all, all areas of Southfield. Our four life support rigs are used up on a daily basis where we call, they may not, if we call Star, they may, they may not take a run, but they'll be notified that our rigs are all used up right now, and in the next run that comes in will be turned over to Star Ambulance. That, that happens on a daily basis. So they will be notified on a daily basis that they're, have, be ready because the next call that goes out will be, be coming to you.
Okay. Now, excuse me if I say this not quite, quite right, Tom, but I don't think, in my own mind, all EMS runs are equal. There are some that are probably less important than others, unless I'm a patient. Now, would we use, in those cases where it's, yeah, somebody fell in bed, we need a rig to come and put them back in bed, would those kinds of things be sent to our backup rather than?
We don't, yeah, we don't use our life, on an invalid assist, we use our engines. What we found was it keeps our, it'll keep our life support vehicles in service, and we'll just send the engine over normal traffic, they do a customer assist, and they, and they go help the resident back into bed. Or many times, they come home from the hospital and they need help getting into the house, we'll go assist them. It's just part of the customer service that we provide. But we'll have our engines do it, and they respond normal traffic, it's no license sirens, they go over it. And dispatch tells them, we're going to be coming over slow, we're not going to be coming license sirens. So we take the burden off of our life trucks in that regard and increase them up for those more serious runs.
Okay. Would this be a case where maybe one of the backups would handle it rather than using our engines?
Well, I don't know if our backups are going to go on a regular basis to just handle those because they're, they're a business.
Okay. They're going to be charged to customers?
And they will charge, they may charge the customer, although they don't, we really don't have that in the P S C.
These aren't transports.
These aren't, they're not transports.
Okay, all right. I don't want to take them away.
No, it's...
Can I, Mr. Mo, right here? I just want to clarify one thing. There are instances where we, where billable even if we don't transport.
Yes.
And there's two situations. One is when we start an IV and we give, we give dextrose for some sort of diabetic. And the other one is when we start, we give breathing treatment. Those are two things where we call treatment, no transport, where we will go for that.
Okay.
But just to clarify that, so if there are, but that's not an invalid assist. We go to somebody's house for an invalid assist, it's, we're clear when we go there that it's just going to be pick them up, put them back, that, that sort of thing.
Okay, this started with this. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mo?
Yeah, Chief and I talked last week on this. So every day, our four advanced life support units are out and we tap into our reserve system, right?
Every day, we may not, the reserve system is notified, it may not be engaged, it may not be implemented. Because, I'll tell you, our paramedics try and get back in service as quick as possible. They don't lulligate at the hospital, they, they don't like turning... they don't like turning, uh, any of our patients over to anybody but our own fire department. They like taking care of our people. Uh, and they're very, they're very, very adamant about that. Um, and they don't, that doesn't, that's not to say they don't, um, do poor treatment on somebody to hurry up the run, I'm not saying that, but they will do everything they can. And they can make up time by getting their equipment back and spitting in, uh, in service sooner, and cleaning up quicker, and those kinds of things.
So we, so we probably have four of our own units out, and then two of the Star units out. So we have six units pretty much covering Southfield at any given time. How often would we have to go into that, that secondary company, Alliance?
Well, I'll let, uh, I, I'm not sure it ever happens with a community where they call their backup.
Okay, well, where it would likely to happen is if we have a, a bad player, and we're, and our crews are all busy fighting a player. It could very easily happen in those days. Or if we're fighting two players, then I would say it's gonna happen.
Because my, my question is, should we at least have a conversation with Alliance that says we would want somebody local, not necessarily within the city borders, but if they contract with another city around us, we, we have, I mean, maybe have a guarantee with them that they, they have somebody local, um, so that if they need that seventh ambulance for something, you know, nobody's waiting from Troy for an ambulance to come down.
I don't want you to think that they're not local because, yeah, Troy, because if you go by, I, I see a, a lot of private ambulance rigs are parked in the city throughout the day, that may be based somewhere else. Alliance in particular, uh, Star not so much I've seen, but they're here because they, as Chief said, they have a lot of other contracts that they use, non-emergency, and are they, what they call, uh, point. They, they, their paramedics are working not out of the station, but out of the truck, and so they'll be assigned to park in different areas. So they're, it's, it's a pretty mobile operation that they have there, not so much based on where their, mainly their headquarters are.
Okay. Well, I definitely yield to the experts in this, and when the Chief and I had talked, I didn't, I didn't even know that there was gonna be a guarantee we'd get one ambulance out of Star, but now that we have two, um, we're, we're, yeah, no, this is a pretty good thing.
And part of the contract is there's four backups. I mean, there's three backups to the primary. So even out, Alliance, and, and part of the reason we didn't go with Alliance as a primary, other than the points that Mr. Sharret made, was that one of their backups is community, and that's who we don't want to use. So, but, uh, a lot, Star has Concord Ambul, Ambulance, Medicare. Concord sits at Providence Hospital, they do a lot of work out of Providence Hospital. So we, through our mutual aid system, we have a lot of, uh, backup built into it now, a lot of redundancy. A large fire at one point, uh, Captain Columbo mentioned was a large fire. Well, our mutual aid partners, um, all have advanced life support transporting. So if we had a large enough fire, and we had all of our personnel committed to the fire, and I, I call in, I give, I empower my command officers to call in mutual aid, they would call in, if all of our life units were, uh, used up, and we had Star in the city, they would, they may say, we need two of your advanced life support units to run out of our headquarters station, and either Royal Oak, or Birmingham, or Bloomfield Township can come down and do that. So that's another level of redundancy built right into the system for us.
Yeah, I, um, did I hear that, uh, that Alliance oversight do not transport?
Oh, no, they don't transport. I said, I said they have, they have other types of, of operations besides emergency transport. They do a lot of non-emergency transfers, like from one nursing facility to another, or for dialysis, that sort of thing.
But, but if they have to transfer a patient, the same as, um...
Oh, it's, they have lock-in stretchers, they're capable of doing it.
The other thing is, and, and, uh, and I don't know if it's been explored, but we get a call for transport, and we take either to Beaumont or Providence, if correct.
We, we go to Beaumont, Providence, Phosford, and we have been over to, um, Henry Ford, West Bloomfield, and even up to Pontiac, St. Joe's, Sinai occasionally, occasionally.
Now, do we ever negotiate with them, uh, to pay when we transport somebody to their hospital? But I'm gonna tell you, I mean, we are putting money into their emergency room, and we're transporting a client, so to speak, into their facility. So, so, so is there, is there competition? I know there's competition...
Absolutely.
Between hospitals where that, where that patient is taken. And I, and I am saying is, how come we've never negotiated with these, and most of them are leased out, these emergency rooms are leased out to a team of doctors as opposed to the hospital?
I, I think that would maybe be a better question for our legal department, but I can tell you this, it's, it's parts being competitive. I've had in the same week, the directors of three hospitals wanna meet with me and talk about why we're not bringing in as many patients anymore. So I said, if we only go to four places, it can't be that we're not going as often as we used to. I, I, we, for, we take patients where they wanna go, that's first. We take them, if they wanna go to Providence, we take them to Providence, if their condition allows. If their condition is such that we need to go to the closest hospital, then we're gonna do that. So that's, that's how that decision is made.
And there's still, there's still a profit, and, that's not even personal, but there's a profit in this hospital.
The hospital's absolutely...
They're willing when you transfer a patient.
They want us to bring them patients.
Absolutely.
So we're assisting them, and they aren't giving a percentage?
I don't know, I don't know of anybody in the business that has those kind of deals that are open to...
They're thinking out of the box.
Providence, Providence Hospital, over the years, has done some, um, has benefited, uh, city of Southfield, Southfield Fire Department.
I may be hitting that EMS truck and negotiating. Why are they...
Anyways, I didn't mean to be funny with that, but I was just saying, you know, it's
emergency rooms, I know for God's sake, when we started life support, it started by a, a leased group of doctors that appeared just the emergency room. And they got involved in it because they were looking for patients. And we made that assisting to them to bring them patients. And that's how it all started, believe me, after September 2. So, so now we go to Phosford, and they go to wherever with these patients, and that's just it. Thing is that, that we're not looking at the other side of the point, so to speak, and trying to, uh, they cut our costs. I mean, we, we've got a lot, have a lot of money, they're trying to...
We, we do cut our costs a little bit in, in replacement of, of, uh, some of the materials, like IVs and, and...
Which is regulated by Oakland County Medical Control, so that, that does help out now.
Okay, um, yeah, um, gentlemen, Mr. Seymour, we need a, a rule 10 on this, right?
Yeah.
I thought we had a rule 10 on this.
That's what, that's what we were saying, Mr. Gray.
I'll move the rule 10.
Uh, it's been, um, all right.
It's a measure of...
Been moved and supported by Prakash and Fraser. Um, all of them favor?
Aye.
Um, then I need a motion.
I'll move the recommendation of the city administration.
Okay, and it's been moved by Mr. Prakash, supported by Mr. Seymour, all of them favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're gonna move on to, uh, item six, uh, which is the, uh, employing retirement system asset allocation update.
Definitely how it started, the experts are here.
Really?
This is, uh, this is another case of a void of emergency, meaning that fiscal problems with hedge systems. Um, the SIR system went very well, uh, has an outstanding investment record over, over the years. Uh, however, periodically, one of the big decisions that needs to be made is asset allocation, where are the, uh, funds going to be invested? So we've got Mr. Christopher Coon of Grand Company, the systems, uh, investment consultant and monitor. Uh, we are fully system here, uh, from HR, uh, that, uh, works with the administration, uh, of the system. And, uh, we're gonna talk about asset allocation, and, uh, a, uh, potential of a new investment manager selection.
Yes.
And get authority to do, uh, do so. Uh, this one will come back.
It'll come back on the 29th, Chris. Uh, good evening, Mr. Coon, I'm recalling you before.
Yep.
Good to see you again.
It's good to be here, and thank you for, uh, letting me speak to you tonight. I met with the City Finance Committee, uh, I think a couple weeks ago, and went over this. I, Councilman Seymour, I think, suggested I put some bullet points together, so I did that for tonight's, um, presentation. And just kind of a recap of where we're at, you know, the system actually has done very, very well. If we look over the last five years, it's up over eight percent. If we look over the last 10 years, it's up over nine percent. And when we compare your fund to other public funds in our database, which is approximately 200, both of those numbers put you in the top 10 percent.
Keep doing what you're doing.
So, um, that's the good news, I always wanna butter you up a little bit. Um...
It's no bad news, though.
Not yet, so... The, our fear is that it's not gonna be so easy over the next five or 10 years to duplicate those types of results. And, and the big point here is fixed income, where over this last 10 years, we've seen, you know, modest, modest returns from fixed income, say seven percent or so. The next five to 10 years, we don't think we can do that from our core fixed income strategies. You know, yields are, were at about two percent, they climbed a little bit. Unfortunately, when yields start climbing, that means your principal is going down, and so we're seeing some losses in the last couple months in fixed income. Uh, some of the other little notes we have in here, you know, our economy seems to be struggling along, kind of moving in a positive direction. Europe is in a, at this point, a pretty deep recession, depending on which country you're looking at. Japan has been in a recession for better than a decade, and now they're trying some new policies over there. We're not sure of what the consequences will be. Kind of the long story there is just economic growth across the globe is low. Um, it's not what it has been over the last decade, and no one's really forecasting it to return back to those, those levels anytime soon. And that generally is not a good, um, indicator for the equity market. So fixed income, our expectation is zero percent, plus or minus two percent for the next five years. That's a pretty challenging, uh, position for your pension fund, when you think you have 25 percent of your dollars doing nothing. The other 75 really have to work hard to get an eight percent return. And so, uh, we have a couple recommendations for you. One is diversifying, and this is the third bullet point down, diversifying the fixed income. We actually have done a number of presentations with the SIR's board, and then I did a, a brief recap of that with the City Finance Committee. Just going over what, what does the fixed income portfolio look like, and with rates so low, what does this mean? And it means that we are going to suffer losses if rates start climbing. And if rates don't climb, then you're gonna make the two percent. And then, as I said, that puts the rest of the portfolio in a position that it has to do over 10, just to kind of get you back to that eight percent target return.
And our actual target is...
Eight percent.
So, we've been making that.
So over the last 10 years, you've done it, but it's, I think the next 10 years are gonna be a little bit more challenging. Now, the equity market's made you incredibly well over the next 10 years, and, you know, you'll be fine. But if they don't, it's, as I said, it puts a lot of pressure on the city to make the contribution. Uh, so the fixed income, one of the things we're looking at there is diversifying that. And when we say that, uh, we were here, I want to say almost three years ago, and we're recommending high yield at that time, that actually has turned out very well for you. But the yields in high yields are low today as well, and our forecast is that while you'll, you'll probably see five or six percent type returns there, it's not the double-digit returns that we've got over the last three years. And what we'd like to do is move into, um, you know, emerging market debt, and then also kind of other opportunities in the global fixed income space with an active manager. Uh, the, uh, SIR's board actually interviewed managers a couple, uh, in the May meeting, is that right? June meeting?
Yeah, the June meeting.
June meeting, and had selected Franklin Templeton as a recommendation for this board to consider. And it was based on their performance and their strategy, and we think it would be a good complement to Pacific Income Advisors, which has been a longtime performer for this, uh, retirement system.
That's Sifka, that'll be coming in July 29.
At the next meeting.
So two things, it'll be a different asset allocation, you know, the authority to actually be presenting a contract for...
Oh, yes, a money manager, subject to approval by State, by, uh, State Attorney's Office.
So, and this is, uh, actually, if you flip to the second page of Little Handout, what we've done there is updated some of the allocations. And so if you look under fixed income, um, it's kind of the third group down, it says core fixed income, we currently have a 25.5 percent target there, and then one percent target to high yield. We had a higher allocation to high yield just a couple years ago, and we've taken that down as it's done very well, you know, selling our winners. Uh, what we'd like to do is kind of reduce the core fixed income a little bit, and add a five percent allocation to the global fixed income space. Any questions there? The next, uh, item recommendation, two, I mentioned, uh, the equity markets may not be able to kind of duplicate the run we've seen, particularly since kind of the recession we had. And what we'd like to do is not only reduce your fixed income allocation, but also reduce some of the money that's in equities right now. And this means putting it into other, or alternatives. And what you'll see here is increasing the real estate allocation slightly from two and a half, the core real estate from two and a half to four percent, and then also adding, um, hedge funds. So that comes as the third recommendation. Uh, this was the one I think had the most questions from the Finance Committee. And the thicker presentation, which I think yours is bound, uh, we actually have that summary for the fixed income that we walked through, and then there's also a brief summary on hedge funds that we went through with the SIR's board. So when we went through some of the alternatives to move money away from fixed income inequity, they thought hedge funds were the one that was most appealing to them, given their, I would say risk tolerances was kind of probably the primary reason. So, um, I don't know, I'll be happy to kind of walk you through the, the hedge fund piece, if anyone wants to.
I, I would like to.
Just hedge fund, though, you make it nervous, so.
They definitely have...
I think it's very unfortunate, uh, not to say...
I think the finance may be nervous, too, so.
Exactly. So, I think that's... So it keeps starting on page, like, 12. And we'll tell you, hedge funds, they have the reputation of not being the best managers of money. Um, I, I, I was talking with someone about this after I was at the City Finance Committee, and, um, the Council Finance Committee, and, uh, the gentleman said, well, you know, if you think back to your graduating class in high school, there's probably more kids in jail from your graduating high school class than there are bad hedge fund managers out there. I mean, everyone knows, well, you think, everyone knows of Madoff, and Bayou, and they can spit off the five or six names that have made the news over the last three or four years, but there's 6,000 plus hedge funds out there. And so if you can think of 6,000 as 6,000, um, that's, that's one in a thousand, that's kind of a bad apple. Um, I know in my high school class, we are not batting that sort of an average, so, uh... They, they have the bad reputation because they went to Dearborn High. Um, all I needed was one kid not to make it, we only had 250 in the class. Um, I will also say that, so while they have this bad reputation, um, there's also kind of a misunderstanding about hedge funds in that, I think most people think of a hedge fund, and they think this is someone who is kind of wild and crazy with their investments. And... They're doing all kinds of stuff. I will tell you, hedge funds are much like mutual funds in that the manager has a, a strategy, and that strategy could be very risky, or it could be very conservative, but they generally are gonna stick to their strategy. So like a mutual fund that invests in the emerging market equities is a very risky mutual fund strategy. There's also the very short-term fixed income or money market fund, which is also a mutual... There's also the very short-term fixed income or money market fund, which is also a mutual fund, but it's very conservative. And there's everything in between. That's how hedge funds are. So, when you say hedge fund, everyone thinks risky, and some of them are, but some of them are not. And so, you have to kind of think, oh, it's, all it really is is an investment vehicle, just like a mutual fund is going to...
You're going to rent a fund that doesn't go with pork belly or something like that.
So, they go all over the place. So, commodities would be in a strategy. There would be someone who would be buying and selling different commodities. Those are the soft commodities, like pork bellies, and wheat, and sugar, and soybeans and things like that. And skilled traders are able to make money doing that.
You know, the last time you were here, you got us in December.
Yes.
And that seemed to, I remember, yes, I remember it was...
I was timber done, yes.
So, it's a little early, and we haven't actually put very much money to work there.
3.5 percent, I think.
So, it's 3 and 1/2 percent, but we've put maybe half of that in, if I recall. So, they're slowly calling, as they buy tracts of timber, Lynn, they call us and say, "Okay, you owe, you know, $100,000 for the tract that we just bought." So, it's been kind of slow. And the good thing about timber is its mother nature that generates, I think it's part of your return. So, it's really a time. You just have to let it rain and sun and...
Do you think you just decide that that was a tree farm, or not? Or not?
Exactly. They plant trees, they let them grow, they chop them down, plant another tree.
It's not like a...
The mills?
No, not a mill, but for the...
Oh, no, no. So, literally, these are farms.
They're tree farms.
Yes.
Wrong to cut down and replant.
Yes. They manage the forest.
Like on Georgia, they, well, in Georgia, see a specific count on these farms. You see them all different sizes.
And that's exactly how you diversify your investments there. So, I will also tell you that hedge funds, the kind of the other kind of bad stigma usually associated with them is that they charge really high fees, right? You get to pay them a lot more than you pay your traditional managers. I will tell you that is true, but it has come down, though, recently. And because of that new structure, it generally is attracting the very most skillful managers out there, because they're able to exploit the market and then earn a higher compensation for that. So...
What happened to the real estate?
So far, so good.
Any other questions?
I was going to say, there's a number of strategies. I would say, just want to stop on page 14, if we could.
Sure.
So, I mentioned, most people kind of consider hedge funds to be, you know, more risk than pretty much anything else. Actually, what a hedge fund tends to do, and I think I used this example with the Council Finance, was a lot of times what they're trying to do is isolate the exact risk that they want in the portfolio. So, the example I used with Council Finance is you could buy Ford stock and at the same time sell GM stock. And so, what, if you've done it in the equal dollar values, what you're playing there is the difference between the performance of those two. You're hoping that Ford does better than GM, regardless of which way the market goes. If the market goes up, more than likely, both stocks are going to move up. You're hoping Ford goes up more than GM. If the market goes down, you're just hoping Ford goes down less than GM. And in those two scenarios, you made money both ways. So, you've taken out the market risk, and what you've really taken out the industry risk, because if something bad happens in auto, it's going to push all of them down. You're just hoping Ford does a little bit better than GM. You've isolated the risk in your portfolio to adjust the characteristics of those two areas, Ford versus GM. And so, what that tends to do is actually put less risk in a portfolio. And you can see that on 14, where you see the HFN. This is just all kind of hedge funds kind of put together, and what their performance has been over the last 10 years. And what you see here is that their standard deviation, which is a measure of the volatility of the strategy, about six. Fixed income's about four. That's the Barclays aggregate. And if you look at the S and P, it's about 15, which would be your equities. So, it's, from a risk standpoint, it looks a lot more like fixed income. You know, the risk or the volatility of those returns is a lot lower than equities. Yet, from a return standpoint over the last 10 years, you actually got a little bit more being in hedge funds. And part of that is, it just lost a lot less in 2008. So, when the market went down 56 percent and you only lost 20, I mean, losing 20 was painful, but you only had to make 30 to get back to even versus having to make, you know, like 70 to get back to even. We also have like calendar year returns. On 15, what you'll see is they tend to do better in the bad year. Not as good as in the really good years. So, when the equity markets are going really good, hedge funds tend to lag behind them. But in the difficult years, when the yellow bars are going down, you can see that the blue bars aren't always going down. So, it's a good diversifier for the equity portion of the portfolio.
I think it's good.
So, we had a little bit more thorough version for the Service Board, just to try to be respectful of your time. We only put in some of the highlights.
I appreciate the bullets. Actually, I appreciate page 15. You've given me a level, a greater level of comfort on hedge funds, right? I want to look at the 20-year history you provided.
So, if you look at 16, once again, it's performance-related, but what we did here was just look at some of the worst periods in the equity market. And what you'll notice is, as I said, you know, the subprime crisis, we did lose money in hedge funds, but it was a third of what you lost in the equity market. And then, in the other periods, you can see it's much less, if not positive. So, as I said, it's just a good diversifier.
All right. Any other questions for...
I would tell you, the one item that was kind of under discussion is what type of allocation for hedge funds. I think initially, I had suggested up to 10 percent with like a 7 percent. And the City, the Council Finance wanted to kind of trim that back a little bit. So, I think we were looking at maybe a 5 percent allocation and a 5 percent maximum. That seems reasonable.
40?
We could always come back and revisit it later.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Siskin?
No, we just wanted, you know, obviously, this is not something you said in that allocation, and we leave it forever. We have to periodically review, and that's what we just wanted to do with the...
All right. So, moving into the 29th, yes? Mr. Pocksky?
I'm sorry.
Moving into the 29th?
Yes.
Consent, all right, yeah. Yes, okay. So, we're good. Thank you very much for being here.
Okay. And if you have questions at any time, feel free to, you know, always hear us.
Got a good job. Thank you. Okay, we're going on to, make sure I have my number right, number eight, Evergreen Road Enhancement Discussion.
Yes. Again, I'll do the intro. We have Eddie Edgewatt here. There's been a lot of work done behind the scenes on the very important Evergreen Road project. Mr. Crowe will lead us through a detailed analysis of the numbers for a magnificent mile. And we have in the audience, we have Lee Schultz that can help out, Brad Zorn, Mike Palsky, and Beth, and the, see, Tracy. And Warrior, very, and Tracy as well. So, that, Mr. Crowe.
Thank you very much. Again, my role here is just to help facilitate discussion on enhancement, and I'll defer to my team members for any specifics that I can answer. But the whole purpose of this is to review where we are today and to give staff direction on possible enhancements. Why is this important? One is to take advantage of the construction season and have the economy to scale. Secondly, to coordinate with utilities. Well, we have the road tore up. That's the time to do additional items. Scheduling and time is of the essence as of now. Staff needs time to review funding options. So, on certain enhancements that the council would like to move forward on it, we need some additional time to put some funding options together. And also, it's important working with the community relations. Michael Mannion's here on a public relations campaign. The road's going to be tore up for at least a year. It won't be closed permanently, but at least two lanes would be impacted, spring of next year through the end of next year, and then possibly the enhancements coming in 2015. Just to recap, we have a federally funded state surface transportation program, which is covering 80 percent of the road reconstruction of Evergreen Road from 10 Mile to 696. And the total project is approximately $6.2 million, of which federal funding is handling 80 percent, and local matches about 20 percent. What that gives us is a complete road reconstruction, stormwater runoff management, and traffic safety, including a landscape median and two roundabouts. What I'm here primarily to talk about with the council are additional enhancements to this road reconstruction project. As you're aware, the council supported the application of a TAP grant, an amount of approximately $750,000. We've received preliminary positive feedback from the agencies. They anticipate making an initial decision sometime this month, and we hope to hear the positive review. And that includes additional money for decorative stand crosswalks, sector of crosswalks at the intersections where the roundabouts are, a 10-foot-wide bike path, additional landscaping for the bioswale, additional pedestrian amenities, and trash receptacles, bike racks, a pedestrian kiosk, and additional enhancements, of which the city center has contributed $100,000 as part of that project. But some other big-ticket items remain for discussion. And if we truly want to make it a magnificent mile, I want to bring to your attention a couple of these items. One specifically, and the detail of this was in your handout, was we had Detroit DTE Energy provide a lighting plan from 10 Mile to 696 for both vehicular and pedestrian lighting. They estimated 116 fixtures on 108 posts would provide our crime prevention, pedestrian, and vehicle lighting, as well as additional decorative mast arms at the gateways at the south, north side, additional lighting at the roundabouts. We asked them to provide a cost estimate for new light poles that include additional structural support to handle the arms required for banners, electrical GFI outlets for holiday events, and for hanging baskets. And that proposal is approximately $1.2 million, of which there is a three-year revenue credit to the project of $72,000, and they've estimated annual operating costs. These light fixtures are the LED version, which will reduce overall energy consumption and be more sustainable. And they also are more sleek line to match our existing street skates. Another major ticket item that may be handled through the water portion of the project is the relocation of the City Hall power distribution system. What is that? The old electric sign in front of City Hall, that big ugly base with the screening. There was some initial electrical work done to relocate that over by the tennis courts and upgrade the electrical system, but that has a price tag of approximately $1.1 million. We've talked about some of the other amenities that could be partially funded through various means, and I'd like to just quickly go through them visually. As the council is aware, we have the roundabouts from the south entrance of the municipal complex to the northern entrance by the library. We have a proposed mid-block pedestrian crosswalk. Again, the intent is that if the city holds major festivals or events on the front lawn, we have the ability to close the street down, similar to one of the major festivals that we had in the past. Parks and Rec can move out their mobile entertainment unit, and it provides year-round safety for pedestrians to cross, but during special events, we have an additional venue. We also have in the median bioswale for the entire length, but in front, in the front porch, I think as Mr. Fraser coined it, in our front yard of City Hall, we have an intensive indigenous landscape, perennials to help filter the water. This is the headway to the Rouge River water system. We have water quality issues, and this will help to provide the demonstration program. The city of Southfield would be leading in this innovative design, and it is designed to capture 50 percent of the road runoff, or approximately two lanes of surface water that'll be treated, filtered, and reduce the overall stormwater runoff into our Rouge system. And this illustration gives a conceptual of that. And again, this was part of the TAP application that helped us to score well, is to have this innovative design in the two roundabouts. And here's a detail of the mid-block crossing. Additional items that we talked about was to have the internally illuminated street signs at our major intersections that you find in other communities. As we age in population and our eyesight goes, this not only provides an aesthetic amenity, but it provides a functional amenity for our senior drivers. And we propose having these at major intersections, north and south. Additional longer-term projects that what we call is gateway projects, that could be done in future funding years, but the coordination would take place during the road construction. We have the major triangle or gateway into our city center at 10 Mile, Evergreen, and Northwestern Service Highway. We have a median that's in pretty rough shape there, gets a lot of debris. We'd like to put some decorative crosswalks, again, as a gateway into it, make it more pedestrian-friendly, re-landscape the triangle or park into a more urban-friendly, pedestrian-friendly park that could use wayfinding signage to direct people to Lawrence Tack or the municipal complex, the pavilion, the Southfield Library, and so forth. And some of those price tags are listed on your item two, page two. And those could be future projects, but there would be some coordination that would be needed at the time of the road resurfacing, which has been extended down to the Northwestern Service Highway. We have, the city has a small park located on the north end, the northeast portion of the project, which could also be a gateway enhancement. We have some money allocated for that. We've got money allocated for public art and sculpture in the median and the roundabouts. And again, some of these projects would be future phases in year 2015 or 2016, but the infrastructure and the planning and the fundraising need to happen soon if we want if we want to take advantage of economy use to scale. We've had a great partnership with SMART. And they have indicated that they would come in and do some additional work in upgrades to the bus system after Evergreen Road gets completed. And with that, I'll just pass it on to any of my colleagues if they have additional specifics that they want to talk about or details that I failed to mention. And would you have to answer any questions that the council may have?
Tell me, where is Evergreen Road?
Evergreen Road runs north and south. This is Ten Mile, and this is the Service Drive.
So that's Ten Mile and the south?
Yeah, eastward.
And the north is?
Up.
Okay.
So this is the intersection here that started the road project. We've done an illustrative concept plan to do additional enhancements as a gateway, as a future project. But we would like to incorporate some upgrades to the existing median that's right now-
That looks like a lot of, well, that green area, that's still on the outfit, looks large. Is that expanded?
No, this is the existing-
That's the existing?
Existing triangle. I think some of the overgrowth limits the site access. It's not very, well, it's not pedestrian-friendly at all. And it gives us the opportunity as a nice gateway entrance into our city center district, also to incorporate wayfinding signage, as I stated, directional to Lawrence Tech, to the Southfield Pavilion. And we would have a comprehensive plan at all of the different gateways into the district. Over on the board, there is some sections or portions of the Evergreen overall concept plan. And then I've added some of the vision that you've seen as part of the city center. Yes, Mr. Frack.
Anyways, you know, what really bothers me about this Evergreen Road construction, this new roadway for One Mile, is that this has been going on for some time. And many presentations have been made. When you talk about doing all these things, I really don't have a clear picture of where the money's coming from to get the job done. And you have all the costs, but I don't see anything where we've got the funds to pay for it. And I, for one, know that Evergreen Road has to be done one way or another. Last year, road is five point six million dollars. You got five lanes, you have landscaping. It's a good, nice street. We tried to do something different with Evergreen in front of the City Hall and with the city center. But I still haven't had a clear of where the money is coming from. I hear about some grant money that's supposed to be coming. I hear there's roundabouts that are necessary to build, to get the grants. But, you know, I guess I have a real concern because I don't see anything that says, "You do this, and I will give you this." And so we're really talking about nothing, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, we're talking about a dream, but I don't know how this dream is going to be paid for. And I'd just like to have one page that tells me how much all these options are going to be cost as pages that I have here. And on each one, where is the money coming from for each one of these items? So that you can pick and choose which one, you can prioritize some. And coming attached, where is the notification that I have money coming as a grant? Now, when we got the neighborhood stabilization folks, they have a letter from HUD granting us X amount of dollars. I knew that the money's coming to us because it tells you how much you're getting and where you have to spend it. And I guess what I'm missing is the same kind of information. Because I really, you know, I have gone through this thing. I've heard all the presentations. I hear HRC talk about it. I hear people saying there's a grant out there. But to this date, I have not seen anything that says, "Here is an IOU. Go ahead and bid your project." From the administrator, the money that is not covered by grant, this is how that money is going to be coming forward. And I guess I can't get excited until I know these things. I mean, to me, it's like the city center, going on for thirty years. Same way as conversation on Evergreen. Now, I told the administrator, "I'm tired of messing around with roundabouts and all this stuff. Evergreen, in the meantime, is a disaster. It's embarrassment to our town center and all the people that work in this area." And I'm saying, I don't see a letter stating on, "If this is done, I am going to give you X amount of dollars." Then I told the administrator, "The five point six million dollars, I'll just do Ten Mile Road to Eleven Mile Road, just like in here, Eleven Mile Road to Twelve." And told him where the five point six is coming, the whatever assistance money, and did it done. And I guess all these other things are great, but I still don't know what we're going to get the money for. Now, I brought up, you know, that we have to have to go for a road bond this year. I mean, we're already, if we get money from the bond and get everything drawn and bid and construct, you're talking like two years away, at least. And our roads are not going to be drivable in two years from now, some of them. We have no money left in major roads. We have no money in local roads. That's all gone. And we're sitting here looking at all these great, I mean, I would love to have every bit of them. Just write a check, say, "Here, your presentation's great. I agree with everything on there. I'm for everything on these sheets, but I don't have the money, sorry." You know, I'd like to buy a Cadillac, but I can't even buy a tire today.
Those are all reasonable questions. I'm going to defer to my colleagues to answer the road funding part of it. But part of tonight's workshop was to get a sense from the council that if the consensus is that street lighting makes sense, we'll sit down with the city administrator and the rest of the staff and figure out how it gets funded. If the transformer relocation is an important item, then we will sit down and figure that out. We have partial answers on some of this. Some of this, council might say, "Terry, this is a great concept with your gateway, but let's push that off five years," and then that will be taken off. We needed some direction tonight. And my job here, again, as facilitator, is to say, if we were to do all of these things and wanted to do it right, there's no right or wrong way. But if we want to make a statement, these are all the different projects we're talking about, some of which may be funded in X, Y, or Z. But we need direction from council on, yes, city staff. We want you to go forward with that and come back with a funding plan. And that's what our next step is after tonight. But with that, I want-
I'll listen to them just a minute. But what I want to, I hear you. And the priority list is what you're talking about. Needs and a priority list of what has to be done first. If it's a transformer, where is that in the priority? But my first priority is to get Evergreen paved and reconstructed, and water running through the sewer and disappearing. I've been like this for two down alleys. I'm tired of seeing water standing, water standing. In the wintertime, gotta solve it. And we're still playing around with Evergreen Road. Now, I agree that this has to go to make city center really come about in the fashion we want it to. I would love to see the roundabouts. I'd love to see the statues and the artworks and create the landscape. But each priority has to have a dollar amount. And if any part of that is going to be coming to us through a grant, on what portion is the grant going towards? Then I know how much I have to ask the administrator for to come up with the other part of it to get that first priority done.
Right. I think we're on the same page. And you would agree with me that if we tore the road up and we dealt with the water resurfacing, the stormwater water, road reconstruction, and then we came to the year later and said, "We'd like to do lighting, and we had to tear up the street to put all of the utilities," you would say, "Why didn't you talk about it at the time when we could do it?"
But you see, but that's a necessity. If you do the reconstruction, and in the future, you're going to have to put, tear it up, then that has to be part of the first phase then. Because in order to save the double payment of getting the construction done, then that has to be part of it. And then there has to be also a cost of it, and how much? If the transformer can be moved at a later time without destroying what we're paying for once, that's fine. But I guess the package I'm looking for is how do we get it done so that it's done so that the other things that they come down, that it doesn't disrupt anything, doesn't hurt anything, we don't have to spend money to tear up and replace, but it works out that in time we do that. And I guess, yeah, it's something I'm asking for.
Right. And as your request, we have not had a sit-down discussion to say, "Lighting is one point two million dollars. Transformer relocation is one point one million dollars. Road enhancement," and that's part of why-
But Terry, how can we, what is the amount that they get thrown up and how much the grant is? I mean, that money's been out there. We've been talking money during the three tonight.
Five point three million dollars is as sure as we're going to get. And again, I'll defer to the ship.
From who? From the certain time we're getting a one dialogue between the two of you. Why don't you let him, I think he's heard you, so let him answer your question.
I'm just frustrated.
I understand that. But we asked the man to give us an overall vision. At some point, then, we will prioritize this. You know, moving the transformer, that's an awful lot of money. And it's basically a visual, it's a cosmetic thing. So that's probably a low priority unless DTE or somebody's going to gift us. So let's hear where the money, the known money is. I think the planner is correct in bringing the package. And then we have to figure out what we can afford. So let's hear that, and then we'll take some more questions.
I'll bonus comment.
Or comment. But let's try to answer some of this, okay?
All right, through the chair. I just wanted to let you know with the actual road funding, that, you know, the bones of the actual road construction project, we applied for those four years in advance. So that was in 2010 that we applied and were successful in securing as much as we can be secure for funds to reconstruct the road. So that's done through the Oakland County Federal Aid Committee. And that committee has a website and details out each of the fiscal years and what projects are slotted for federal funds through Oakland County. And so Evergreen Road from Ten to Eleven Mile has been on there for, or are what we consider a full reconstruction since 2010. Now, each year, the Fed has to approve their budget and get all those dollars circled out. So they don't totally promise. They say it's obligated about the time that we go out for bid for this project. Well, when MDOT goes out for bid, because it goes through an MDOT bid letting process. And that'll be happening in a few months. So we're entering that point where we're going to actually have something in writing, and that will be the MDOT agreement that we bring back to council that spells out the dollars, and the dollars will be the same that you see in front of you. It's just a short blurb here for the road construction project cost, but that federal participating, five million, eighty-one thousand and some odd dollars, with the local match being one point two seven million dollars.
Where are you?
First page.
The first page of the preliminary estimate of costs. That top group of costs are the details for a TAF grant. So those are enhancing grants that we're waiting to hear back this month. And then there's a little short blurb for the road without going into the details. But the road is really the only piece that we know for sure that we are vetting. And so we're going to be doing the road. And we're very hopeful that we're going to get that TAF grant, so we'll be able to do some enhancements. And it's the remaining enhancements that we're just trying to do. I mean, we can sit down, and that's what we were thinking. We just want to make sure that we weren't going to go through too much effort. If everyone decided, "Lighting, we don't want to spend that much money on lighting." And so we're just trying to not spend our real. So that's why Terry wanted to bring this before everyone and kind of get some buy-in and some guidance, and I imagine it's probably something that we bring to council finance with a better workout on the dollars and cents.
But how can you go to bid when you don't have the specifications of what you're bidding on? And if the bids come in and you haven't got the money, what do you do then? I mean, say, we can't be cut any of the bids?
Well, we don't go to bids until funds are obligated.
But you're saying that those are online, or those go through the county, or MDOT, or whoever. And I guess, don't they tell you that your slot is now in 2013? And when you get all your bids and that, this is the amount of money that is going to go slotted for you that is set aside for us?
Right. Before, before we go to bid.
They're always saying that any money is set aside for us.
Before we go to bid is when they provide that to us. And they use the dollars and cents that we have submitted on our original application that went through the federal aid committee.
And then that'd be fine. But if the grant falls through?
It's what grant?
Whatever grant, any assistance dollars that come in. If they don't come in, does that mean you shoot down Evergreen Road?
No. The road project is going to happen. It just means that there wouldn't be benches and trash receptacles and decorative crosswalks. You would just, we would reconstruct our road with the roundabout, and we would sod or seed, you know, the areas and move forward like any other project.
But you're saying that roundabout is tied to the grant?
The roundabout is-
So if I don't get my grant, then I'm not going to build a roundabout?
The roundabouts aren't part of an enhancement. That's just part of our reconstruction design. So that is our federal dollars for the road reconstruction.
I don't know, Terry.
What you're saying, the money is obligated, right? Money is obligated, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't, Michael, I appreciate that, you know? And, you know, you go to the bank and you say, "You know what? We'll fill out all these documents and we'll give you a loan," right? And I said, "Well, is that a sure thing so I can go buy the house?" Well, no. And it's the same kind of a situation. And I come up and I commit myself to buying something. And then they say, "You know what? Something has come up and the bank has changed rates or that, whatever, and we never promised you anything." And I'm just saying is, I sure like something in writing, signed by somebody that says, "If you follow all these steps, and this is what you're going to build, I'm going to give you the money." Whatever portion they got in this slot, you know, or-
And we will get that in probably two months or so. Roughly eight weeks or so, we should hear something.
But we're running out of time.
It's for the two thousand construction season, okay? So we do have some time here to work on this, to finalize the enhancements. If we want to do them, what we are giving the funding for- What we are giving the funding for is for just the reconstruction of the road, okay? All this other stuff is the frosting on the cake.
The other part of that is, how is the city gonna come up with its portion?
The one million dollars?
Whatever that portion's gonna be.
One point two?
Right.
Yeah, that is budgeted in the major road, uh, budget.
I don't think so. We don't have any money.
A lot of this seems like it's out of our control right now, we're, we're in a waiting game, so. Uh, Ms. Seymour wanted to make a comment.
Well, I've, I mean, this, this is an awful lot to be doing this this hour tonight. We've had a long meeting, and this is a lot of detail, I think it really deserves separate meetings. This, I mean, this, this is just a lot to absorb as to all the stuff we've-
Well, I don't believe we're making a decision tonight. An introduction-
Well, but we're trying to get some kind of direction.
Well, we're getting feedback, that's for sure. Um, Mr. Mark?
Well, I totally agree with you. Um, and, and you know, it's almost like, I think this should be scheduled as important as our visioning session. I wish all seven members were here. I don't know what it takes to get all seven of us at a, at a given meeting, but I hope this is it. Um, and if we can find a, a way to schedule, because this is our major project for twenty fourteen, and it's not just our major project for twenty fourteen, it's a huge project in general for the city to undertake. So, listening to Don saying, and I, I kinda am understanding everything that he's saying. I'd like to see if we did absolutely nothing, if we said we wanted no frosting on the cake, what does the cake look like, when does the cake bake, and how much does the cost of this paying for? Then on top of that, let's say we wanted to do light, I think that's something we would all agree on. What, what, what are the funding sources for those lights on top of the cake? So we know, we know that the road is being paid for, this is how it's being paid for. I would wanna see, what are the funding sources here? Let's say, a priority mine probably is moving that ugly transformer, but if it's more realistic that we're gonna get funding, or we have grants, or we have money to deal with the light, but it's a pie in the sky idea to move the transformer or anything else, my priority's gonna lie with, where can we actually get the dollars? So, and this is a good start, but if we can, and when it comes back to council, if we could see like, you know, a better sidewalk, this is a potential funding source, this is the likelihood we're gonna get that funding source. Uh, better shrubbery, this is a potential grant we could apply for, this is the likelihood we could apply for, is that grant? I think this merits a full seven members of council somehow getting to a meeting, I don't know why that could ever take place, but we could sit down, work it out, and then that's how I would assign my priorities, based on what's most realistic. Cause I, you know, honestly, you know, I, all of it, I want all of it, but I, you know, obviously it's twelve point nine million dollars, and that's completely unrealistic. So what, what are the most realistic dollars? So not necessarily what are the most priority projects for me, but what are the most realistic dollars we could attain? I think it's where I would wanna shift my priorities. Um, so, I think, to the chair, we need to, we need to schedule a, doesn't have to be on a Monday night, doesn't have to be on a council meeting night, but we need to schedule an Evergreen Road, cause time is of the essence. We gotta get this, we gotta get our dusting all before we, before it's too late.
Twelve minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Frisk.
Yeah, um, first of all, does this, the, the figures that we're looking at here take into consideration, consideration just the rebuilding and quadrants to Evergreen Road towards the, all of city center?
Just Evergreen Road.
Well, one question I have is, why do we need forty benches just between, you know, US town and, and eleven mile road?
Just, just through the chair. That was an estimate based on, uh, if you think about it, we're doing two sides of the road, so that's two miles. We're gonna have additional benches at the intersections and the roundabouts.
Two rounds.
Yeah, there's one mile going north and one mile going south. So you got twenty, now, now it's twenty on each side. Then you have additional benches at our parks, at our roundabouts, at our, our gateway entrances. And when we plotted it all out and then, you know, standard spacing for pedestrians, that's where we came up with a rough number of forty. And that was an estimate, and the TAF application guys asked us the same question, but we were able to convince them that we had thought this through and plotted this out. So, it, it may be thirty-five, it may be forty, but that was an estimate that we came up with. To answer, if I may, to, so, we've asked for seven hundred and fifty thousand from the TAF grant, uh, and they, they may not necessarily give us that much. They might come back with seven hundred thousand. All right, so then you take out your benches. So this is sort of, this is what we're asking for, knowing that we may have to scale it back, but we still have a good shot at this grant that is for street enhancement.
The only thing we're really sure about is the road construction.
In fact, at this point, at this point.
Okay, does the road construction include the roundabouts?
Yes.
Okay.
Have to include that.
Well, that's, that's what I always understood, yeah. Um, I guess there are several different ways to lay this out. One is in, uh, phases, uh, phase one, phase two, phase three, and the cost that goes along with phase one, phase two, phase three. That would, you know, that's what the engineering and the planning folks bring to us, and then we take a look at it and see, is that what is the priority for us? And again, I agree with the comments that have been made, that dollars and sources have to come along with those, with that plan. Um, and that's the best way that would, for me, that would make some sense.
And, and these are excellent comments that you're giving us, because you haven't said to us, we don't want the street lighting at all. And, and this is the next step. We will prioritize this based on phasing. We'll sit down with the city administrator and the rest of the team and identify potential funding sources, and then we'll try to do a phasing plan where, uh, these are things that need to be done or should be done in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and, and further years out.
Yeah.
But again, this is good feedback, because you haven't said anything absolutely no or absolutely yes, so we can work with this list, and then we can then further look at potential funding sources, whether it's bonding, whether it's borrowing, whether it's grants, or probably a combination of all those things.
Yeah. The, uh, to me, the phasing makes some sense, uh, because it takes into consideration what has to be done. For instance, we may put the road in and then come back later on and wanna move the switch, the power switch out front, and find out we have to take a part of the road in order to, or, you know, some of the, the power feeds out of that, but we should take that into consideration when you do the phasing.
Right.
So we don't come back and, and the very first thing we do is have to cut a six-foot slot across the road in order to-
Right. And Mike, Mike, you know, that I don't know if there's a conflict with the water project, but that, that's been-
It's very possible that, that will be moved anyway because of the water main beginning of the roadway.
Yeah.
So that's a possibility that we're gonna have to look at.
It does. Um, what I think we should think about doing is probably having like a, a four-hour finance committee on this. I mean, all the way from, um, Norman Glacier, what's happening, um, to-
I think we oughta do the full council.
I do too.
Oh, I mean, I, I'm, I'm saying it should be preparatory, just, uh, just to work through-
I'd do the full council, I mean, we're all-
Well, that's fine, yeah. And, you know, the, uh, comment that, uh, that Jeremy made about, uh, I don't know when all seven council members were gonna be here to plan this, uh, my philosophy is the world is run by people, show up.
True. But here's the problem with what we have right now. This is a great piece of work, because it's all here, that's the business.
That's right.
Okay. The problem we have is that we don't have some of the pieces here. For example, we do not have anything about water in here. The water fund can, can support part of this, but we don't have it in here right now, cause that wasn't Terry's charge. Terry's charge was, get us all the stuff on here that would make, yeah, the-
Start a perfect project.
Right. And, and, and he'll show the big number, and he's done. So now the question is, how do we get this in form so then council can work with it? And I think there's another step, there's some homework that's-
Yeah, I, I think so.
Yeah, and now whether, whether it doesn't go to finance, that's fine, but then staff has to do it, we have to have a major workout on this, so, so we-
Obviously, we need more access.
But, but what are you saying, I think, is, is they get to work out some of the stuff with, with science, I mean, when you bring it to the full council, cause you can, you can know a lot more with three people on a staff. I mean, you really can, and I, and I, I consider both ways. But some of the stuff, we're saying what we want, but we're not saying what's gonna be the cost of some of the stuff, that's what's missing. Like, like you said, what about the water?
For example?
These are all the things we want, but what's the intention to undo this, and they get all that cleared? We don't know that yet.
Question was asked. If we had, it's zero outside money, all the outside money, and with the worst case, the worst case, we had to do it all ourselves with our own money, cause everybody agrees, this, this has to get done, okay? How much would it be? Okay, and-
What would it look like?
What would it look like? Okay? And where would the dollars?
How much would it be?
And would it have a roundabout or wouldn't it? Because our understanding has gone up and out, that to get the grant money, it's a big piece, five million, oh eighty-one, you need a roundabout, so that's what got us the points, okay? If, if the grant would fall to the wayside, which it probably won't hopefully, the worst case scenario, you gotta have a contingency plan. Would you have to have the roundabout in it or wouldn't you?
If we paid for it ourselves.
Our understanding is, you pay for it yourself, you don't have to have it.
Right. And true, watch cookies, huh?
Right. I could, uh, I, I'll let Gary jump in, but I, I could, I could, I could suggest that they have to base it on statistics, that roundabouts improve safety, more than ninety percent reduction in fatalities, cause they eliminate the T, the T crash. There's seventy-six percent reduction in injuries, thirty-five percent reduction in all crashes, and slower speeds are generally safer for pedestrians. They reduce congestion, cause they're efficient both during peak hours and other times, and they typically less delay. They reduce pollution and fuel use, cause there's fewer stops and hard accelerations, less time idling. They save money because often no signal equipment to install, power, maintain. Small roundabouts may require less right-of-way than traditional intersections, and there's also often less pavement needed, and they complement other common community values such as quieter operation, functional and aesthetically pleasing.
You know, you get, you get fewer, you get fewer, uh, injuries if you're driving a Hummer, but doing that money by Chevrolet-
I, I'm just saying there, there's value to it beyond, beyond the grant, that's all.
Can I, can I have?
But I'm not telling you, I'm-
I mean, we don't have accidents.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of it, but I'm not out there twenty-four to the day.
As far as anything that you've said so far about, you know, at least we haven't said, now, don't, like, I don't think we're at a point where any of us in good court conscience can say, we want this or we don't want that. We need, we need it put to us in a way that we can make those kind of statements. And at the risk of, asking a really dumb question, what's a TAF grant?
Well, I'm, I'll defer to our engineer. All right. Because I, I don't wanna, the TAF, what is the TAF stand?
TAF is a replacement for the enhancement grants.
What's the, what's the word?
What's the acronym?
Transportation-
Transportation Alternatives Program.
And who's it come from?
Comes from the state.
Okay, so some of it on here comes from the federal government, and some of it comes from the state?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thanks. I'm done now.
Um, I just, I, I would like to say that, you know, we've made a commitment to try to build this project in one year, okay? And not have you go through a winter of having half-completed roundabouts and those types of things. So for us to make that commitment to you, we've gotten through the right-of-way, we're talking utility, you're probably gonna start to see some utility work, start their underground work shortly out there. The, um, the absolute latest that we can be on a state letting to get you through next year and be done with traffic in the roundabouts and on the roads, even if there's no enhancements, is the March letting, okay? The March letting is the first Friday in March, and for us to make that letting, we have to turn in plans in October for what you want in your project, okay? With all the enhancements to be able to say to the state with confidence, these, there's some funding for this, and we're ready to go. To do it in October, we really need about maybe forty-five to sixty days to get that incorporated in MDOT's world and their format, okay? Of whatever you ultimately decide to do. So the time crunch is coming, and if we miss March, then what I don't wanna have to do is pave through those roundabouts and open it up temporarily with temporary signals, signals and all that other stuff, until the weather breaks in fifteen to build the balance of the project. So timing is becoming very critical for this project and for our commitment to you to do it in one season, okay? I just want everybody to understand that. I think that what Councilman Prakash asked for is absolutely spot-on. We're ready to go to that level. The only thing we'd like to do is set a quick timeline to get back to you to get it done so that we don't miss the deadlines that we've made commitments to you and the staff.
I think, you know, one, one sit-down then, for staff, it has to be an all-day workout to get ready. We know the question's asked.
I understand exactly where everybody is. I think we're ready to get it back to you and, and let you make your decision.
Well, a couple of things. I mean, this is the biggest project we have done in many, many years, and maybe the biggest project we've done, do for many more. And we really haven't had the time to sit down and talk about it in detail. It's just almost an all-day meeting to really get, get to it with council or however we decide to do it. But why don't, I wanna ask a question, because Terry raised the issue about the roundabouts and said how it reduces all these accidents and so forth. We're looking at Evergreen Road, what's our accident record here? What's our history on Evergreen Road? What would this solve? I mean, I don't see many accidents on between ten and eleven mile, so I don't know, maybe we have to just accept the roundabouts, because we might have spent our grant.
We shouldn't be discussing roundabouts again tonight.
Well, it's just-
I don't think so.
No, but it's one of the things, he just said all the reason why we have them, and if we're gonna go that route, I'll, like, you know, maybe we do this hoping ourselves we don't do roundabouts.
Well, I think tonight, what we need, uh, is to have another meeting on this after the city administration advises us that they're ready. So, uh, unless there's more questions on this, I don't, I don't see going forward with any more discussion on this.
My question is about the traffic safety on Evergreen Road, I'd like to know. I'd like to know all problems you've all been dealing with.
Yeah.
My, my question is this, and, and Jim raised the question, so I'll go. And, and what I'm trying to understand, if, if we're talking about a full reconstruction in these amenities that are on here, I didn't realize that water isn't out there. I mean, how do you do a complete reconstruction that costs, and they also how much it's gonna cost, if you don't have the price for sewer and water? I don't know, sewer may be on it, but I-
Start sewers, through the chair. Uh, start sewers to fix the problems of flooding and all that are in place. The easements are now in place, I think that came dead before council, for exception.
Is it in this number?
It's in that number.
Good.
And where are the sewers?
The water is not in there.
Where's the sewers?
The water-
You said that's already done?
That's in the base project that, that the feds are paying eighty percent for.
Okay, but that's not in here.
The five million dollars.
It's not in here, stormwater.
It's in the, it's in the five, or the six point three million dollar project.
Okay.
You have to have an all-
Now, what about the water?
The water is not in there, because this estimate was prepared in April, and the water issue and the replacement came up after this estimate was done, and so it, this hasn't been updated or requested to be updated. So we will be happy to add that back in, but-
What is the water issue?
The water issue is that, uh, Mike can speak to it a lot better than me. The water main is under reinforcement on the road there, and we wanna move it out of the roadway, so if we ever have any break, um, we won't be digging up a brand new road.
How much?
Um, that's where someone has a property area, we're gonna have to be, I want a whole water main out into the ground.
This should include every single base of this project. If the number's fifteen, then that's what it is, because the water fund has the, has the ability to, so it doesn't hurt the numbers, it's just better profit for plants, so we know everything.
Is that in a six point three million?
No.
Not?
It's not here, you know? Cause it's a new development or a new concept.
Cause it's, it's a new development or a new concept for the paper.
And I just.
It can be, it can be, a hundred percent.
And let me just say this, why I maybe really outspoken ahead. But all of us have lived with the change order on Franklin Road, the change order on Inster, where the engineering, you know, had to get it wider than originally, read it man, uh, MDOT standards. And the Telegraph Road, four years later, it still isn't done. Right? Gosh, your road, they say they're gonna do one thing, they do something else. It still looks like garbage. And, and so now I'm in here looking at a single project in front of City Hall, and I expect everybody to be accountable that it's gonna be exactly what we say it's gonna be.
Right.
And what it done, if it's in two fourteen or two fifteen, it's gonna be done right. We're not gonna find some crazy thing out there somewhere where I'm gonna have to try to find a, you know, million dollar project with eight hundred thousand dollar change order. I'm after insane. And, and, and I just don't wanna, we got four years, they still don't have a water system out the, the median of Telegraph Road. I don't play along, but Mike's at the same age, and the state says, oh, we're out of money now. Well, that's your problem. You took the, tore the road up, you gave me asphalt and bit the concrete, you tore up my line, you cut out all my shrubs, you shut down businesses, and you got garbage. And I'm tired of that, I really am. I, I've had it with all these different institutions that do this work. I mean, and, and, I mean, somebody's gotta be really accountable, so that I'm not gonna pay a penny more, penny less. I wanna know where the money's coming from and go do the project.
I think I'll agree with you, Don. Alright, so, Mr. Charette, you'll get back to us?
Yeah, we're gonna have a major workout on this.
And we'll do another meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have two last things on our, our, um, thank you all.
Well, Mr. Charette, I'd like to, some sort of recommendation made at our, um, next televised meeting, the schedule, the schedule of the day.
I will schedule it when I get the word, when.
We, we should.
He teaches research for this, so I'm not gonna let it drop.
Alright, I promise you.
But I'm not gonna set a date either, when I don't know how much homework has to be done.
Yeah, but let me say this to you. You've gotta quit, go, drop that date.
I know.
And, and, and I don't care.
That's.
And I don't care what it takes to meet that drop date, I want that done. I mean, me personally, no excuses, we gotta get it done. If we're gonna get it done, and Evergreen Road is gonna be done according to what we want, then we've gotta, we meet every day if we have to, to get this drop dead date on the table and on the.
I'm not being, uh, casual about this, but I, I think everybody's heard, and we all know we're up against a deadline, so. We'll, we'll let it go, and we'll, we'll make a meeting now. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Lee.
Okay, uh, we have two, um, uh, little pieces that shouldn't take too long. So, um, number nine, uh, we need the schedule, um, I need a rule ten for this. Um, a committee of the whole meeting at six P M. on the twenty ninth July. This is getting a little. And this, uh, is, um, um, committee of the whole thing, which sounds like the mayor. Um, can I have a rule?
I move that we have, find a need for immediate action, and I will, uh, move or rule that.
I'll support that.
Um, the move is supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
You know, I wanna go home. I move that we have a committee of the whole meeting, six P M. July the twenty ninth, two thirteen, twenty thirteen. Support.
And the move is supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Charette. Number ten is Mr. Fraser, what, how did you let this happen?
I don't know. I, you know. The book has had two pushes that jerked me out.
I think we need to start, because in your resolution, you have a standard resolution. You gotta start that line right at the end, and then, because, you know, we fill it in and we catch it.
Well, I, I have the line on, but I, I always rely on Mr. Fraser too. We will, we'll take care of it. I'm surprised it didn't happen.
Nobody noticed it, nobody thought it.
I hate to be talking. I, I blame myself, because I got my attention with a letter on a rubbish can from the side of a house. Is that in this ordinance? It's not anywhere.
No.
No.
But what is he talking about, the letter?
Oh, I, that's, yeah, I have, that was.
Uh, Gary, Sue can speak to that. Um, this person, uh, complied, and then they write this letter right later.
He, he got a warning, now he's claiming.
But when did we pass the ordinance?
Right, he's claiming that it was.
About a scan.
But, but he, he's claiming that it wasn't published before he got the warning, but he never got a ticket on it.
Don't forget all about that.
But he's also complaining about safety.
I'm asking you, I vote for, for, for garbage cans not to be stored.
What the ordinance says, you could store them on the side, but they have to not be visible from the street. So, if, in this case, he's got.
So they covered the landscaping and.
Well, exactly, and that's what he's done, right.
That's, okay. I just watched her petition, I thought I was sleeping.
No, this, um, this is tricky, and it's sort of strange. Month ago that he got the warning, now he writes this three page, single spaced letter. Uh, I think he's trying to be a, I'm a sort of lawyer.
No, I think, I think he's got a good point though, I really think he's got a good point.
This is how we got sent that one time.
He just doesn't agree with, you know, the.
So at that letter, the administration, I think, responded.
Yeah. Or. Sue responded.
One, okay.
Yeah. This is, this is sixteen fifteen. Sixty, I think it's thirteen minutes.
Uh-oh. We're still checking, anyhow, let's do the rule.
I'll move a rule ten to the meeting to that.
Alright. Anybody?
Board?
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we need a motion to introduce.
Or, do I make you look at it?
No, I'm stretching it out.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Fraser?
I move that we introduce ordinance number sixteen thirteen for D B twelve fifty-four P.
Support. The move by Fraser, the board by Monk, all in favor?
Aye. And through the chair, to Ms. Ward. Then this item can come to the twenty ninth, because that's the next regular meeting for enactment, just go on the twenty. We didn't lose any time.
That's why we're doing it tonight, we have a rule ten. Yeah. Okay. So, uh, is there any other items to come before the body?
I do. There's a real fast one. Uh, in yesterday's, I think it was yesterday's paper, uh, there was an article that Mike McGee was just promoted to the chief executive officer of the law firm. My question is, does that mean that we now have someone new to work with?
Yes.
Yeah, the, uh, introduced the new person as the, uh, right, uh, meeting. Says, uh, both the states smarter than me. Yeah, we have access to, okay, to seven thousand dollars now.
Anybody else? Alright, then.